Meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join with me in the signing of the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation. We're now in this whole, with the reputation that is strong.
Very much. Members present include myself, Chair Jacob Brunn, Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim, Supervisor Michael Albert, our Admin Coordinator Diana Selby, Finance Director Bonita Winters, Treasurer Frank Saffali, Conservation Recreation Director Dr. Augustus Jackson, Engineer John Tressler, Solicitor Ron Karrison. Got it? Got it right here? Announcements, we had a standing executive session this evening from 5:35 PM to 5:51 PM regarding property matters and litigation regarding the back nine and max matter. I wanted to thank everyone that came out to our trunk or treat. We had several hundred folks come out to that, so kudos to Alex and Diana for organizing that. That was a great job. Leaf collection is now through December 1st, so please be sure to check out the website and make sure you're not putting things that shouldn't be in there like apples and other fun stuff like that. Sticks. The other thing that we just got news of today, we were awarded $175,000 from the Community Conservation Partnerships Program via DC Panar for the next phase of Marshall's Falls. So, wanted to let everyone know about that. Next minutes, we have minutes of the October 22nd regular meeting.
First energy.
Oh, sorry. The first Energy Road closure on River Road between Hollow Road and Ware and Drive is from November 19th through 20th with rain dates November 21st and 22nd. That's for regular treatment, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's two, it's two large trees on the corner of River Road and Church Road. I didn't realize Julie wasn't going to be here, but we might, I don't know if we have to do anything to allow Church Road people to go the other way to access their, their houses. We might want to do that.
We can coordinate that with Chris. We don't have to vote on.
But it does mean, if anyone wants to know, it means that if you want to get to, like, is it to Pew One or where Fort Pew is, you're going to have to go all the way Hollow Road to 209, back Headquarters and back down to River Road. Just for one or two days, but.
All right. Like I said, we have the minutes of the October 22nd, 2024 regular meeting.
Motion through.
Motion by Mr. Albert.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lovenheim. Any questions? All in favor? Right.
All right.
Hi. Hey, bills and obligations, $181,182.83. That includes ratification of previous bills from the general fund and then today's consideration of bills from the general fund, escrow fund, capital improvement grant fund, and the fire tax. Do I hear a motion?
Motion through.
Motion by Mr. Lovenheim.
I'll say it.
Second, Mr. Albert, questions?
Is that gonna, does that make all the payments to fire or does it still keep coming in? If someone wants to answer that or?
Excuse me?
Putting you on the spot with your first meeting here. Now, I just, I see there's some big numbers that are going out to the fire companies. Is that the end or is there?
No, no. What that is, is we had a help back allocation for their insurance, for their equipment and their liability. They decided to pay that direct themselves to the insurance company. They asked if we can release that fund.
Okay, perfect.
So I do.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else? Favorit?
All right.
All right. Okay. Next, we'll proceed to the Solicitor's report.
Yes. To Chair, the report is that I had ascended the two meetings in October, one for supervisors and one planning commission. And we also had two oral arguments, one in the Carol matter involving the non-protocole appeal and also one on the mountain manor land use appeal. And the back decision is coming down just as of November 1st. In the mountain manor appeal that the court had basically ruled generally in favor of the township and by that I mean that they ruled that the motocross track is not a permitted use and that it is also not considered a membership club as the applicant attempted to argue before the zoning board. The court did say, however, that mountain manor does have a continuing resort use so that any uses that would be resort related could continue. But again, a motocross track is not resort related, so that cannot continue. And I also filed the legal complaint in the Ellis matter with respect to the use of this property for business purposes. And we also had reviewed some of the plans that have come in with respect to recent filings. And other than that, that pretty much was about it for October. A lot of litigation, a lot of court-related arguments.
Great. Any questions on board? No?
This question is very long.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
From about Penn Hunter, have you had any meetings with him regarding this developer's agreement?
No, I have not, have had no meetings with him regarding a developer's agreement.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's on my, on my on my pile to do, but I have not spoken with him probably in a good while. When I say good while, maybe a good month and a half or so.
Okay, so it's the last time we, oh yes, but, and so there's no chance for any review of any sort of a rock draft?
Yeah, because I haven't done it yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a pretty busy two or three weeks. We've had a series of plans to review, which will be the planning commission this coming Thursday. We've been working with the township on Vision Lost Trail, trying to help get that ready for construction. Green Mountain Drive Bridge, the EP submission for GP 11 is ready to go in. The master plan, Bike Park, Mrs. has been conducting interviews with some interesting parties. She's also talked to Forrester, just continuing things moving forward on that project. I am meeting with Mr. Lovenheim. We took a look at some of the roads in Quinn Lakes, the states, see what condition they were in. So as I said, we've been, we've been fairly busy with the momentary projects in the last couple of weeks. Good doing.
Can I ask? I, I saw that it's on the agenda for the planning commission meeting that two days from now?
Yeah.
Thursday? Just curious, the 447 209 large development. Do you know, has that been reviewed by PennDOT or is that sort of pending PennDOT review?
It's sort of pending PennDOT review. I don't, they submitted an application, I'm going to say a year ago.
Right.
And PennDOT would not review it until the township offered comments. We met with PennDOT, the applicant, when I say we, township engineer, myself. I don't know if anybody else. Not yet was there or not, but anyway, we, we told them we had several concerns.
Yes, you've got a lot of notes, obviously.
Right, with the project. And PennDOT told them that if they were going to move forward, they should work with the Petrus to get those improvements brought up to where they need to be. If they weren't working with the Petrus, they were going to be responsible for the improvements. That's where it was left. I don't know if there's any more formal reviews taking place with PennDOT at this time or not.
Okay.
I've spoken to the developers. I don't think it's moving beyond that point.
I, I just can't, looking at the plans initially, I'm just surprised that intersection is just horrible, trying to take a left and I don't think what they're going to do is going to fix or help anything, so.
Agree.
Right.
All right. Anyway, we're going to obviously get a chance to review it later. It's not even the planning commission yet. Just wanted to, just wanted to ask.
Will they be there at the planning commission now?
Uh, I believe it's on the agenda, isn't it?
It is on the agenda.
They should be there.
All right.
If it is, it should be tabled. I wouldn't discuss it without them. I'm, I'm not the chairman.
It's just in a vacuum.
Yep.
Yeah. Present your hand.
Yeah, I do. John, were any of your reviews related to the helping mind step plan that's going to be presented?
I believe so, yes. I think yes, but I can't remember exactly what we said, but yes. Like I said, we had four or five reviews coming in and I was off the last couple of days, so I can't remember exactly, but yes, Helping Mind was on there.
There is a lot of plans for Thursday. The planning commission. The planning commission, there's a lot on there. I believe it's on there.
It is, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So there's a plan, a sketch plan, but there's also a sign of the site saying, ads available, so who knows?
I can sell it. Karen?
Um, so Mister Trust, you had mentioned that um Missy was conducting the surveys with the interested parties for the bike park.
Yes.
When will she have those wrapped up? Because no one in her society is they contacted.
Uh, she's not done yet. She's looking for more people to talk to. I know that. Uh, did you respond to the requests?
The last meeting, my mother was meeting with the council, the crisis meeting, so.
I know I spoke to Missy, I think it was Thursday of last week. I, I wanted an update from her. And she told me she was conducting interviews, but she was, she was a little bit disappointed in how many responses there were, so there's no reason why she shouldn't be talking to anybody who has responded.
Okay, yeah, she's not reached out either my mother or myself.
Do you have her email address?
I don't.
Uh, see me after the meeting and I'll give it to you.
Okay, I'd be happy to get in touch with her.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that we don't miss whatever the deadline is.
Right, well, it's, it's, we're trying to stick to a strict schedule, but there is some flexibility there. We, the, the interviews are important, so we'll get to you.
Marjorie?
Yeah, um, when is uh the master bike plan deadline? Because the last meeting was mentioned for January of twenty twenty-five.
I'm not sure. I don't know if Alex can answer that. I haven't looked at the schedule in four or five weeks.
What I mentioned, we requested the extension.
The town, the township requesting the extension for the end of twenty twenty-five. So the next public meeting is gonna be on December eleventh.
Question. Our, our bike park is pretty much unusable now. Well, grown up with weeds. Why are we building how we want?
So this survey is specifically asked what we should be doing with that property. Not building a new one, but whether that property should get reused for the exact reason you just said. It's not necessarily.
We needed permitting. John, you can explain. We needed permitting to redo, to redo the drainage.
Well, there's two, there's two, there's two bike park plans sort of going forward. We have the existing bike park, which uh needed to be uh remedied in terms of construction for stormwater. That is ongoing. We, we've got a review in the conservation district on how to remediate it. Uh, they're working on that. And then in addition to that, we're working on a master plan for the entire bike park, which would include uh different aspects from how, how we should utilize the rest of the acreage of that bike park.
But doesn't seem like bike park isn't working now. Why would we consider another one?
It, it, it's not constructing a second one. It's fixing the one we have and then talking about the rest of the site as well. We're fixing the one that we have, but we're not taking physical action on it now because we need the required permitting from the state and the county in order to do so. So we don't wanna do something outside the scope of the existing permits.
Why can't we develop it natural the way it is?
So, so which is it? You want, you want it fixed or you don't want it fixed?
Well, I, I don't see any sense of having a period. That bike park is meant for people who like live in it. As suburban area, the kids can ride their bike to it. Now you've got parents that their bikes on a car, drive them there. It's hardly ever used. It can't be used with weeds.
A lot of folks do use it, but we need to remediate the, the stormwater issues and the drainage issues now to, in order to restore it. So when we have the permitting to do so, which we would have before the next construction season, hopefully, we'll be able to remediate that so folks can use it again.
Do we need to, do we have to do that before we have a master plan? It seems a little bit chicken and egg to fix the bike park if a master plan and the community says you don't want a bike park. It doesn't make sense.
Look, I, had, would I have, have done it when, when the previous boards of supervisors did it? You know, no, probably not, but they chose to. They sought all this money, so I feel like we have responsibility to maintain the asset that we have that said, you know, we don't have to do it haphazardly. So when we're talking about the master site plan, that's not going to change the nature of the existing improvements. It's just the rest of the property because there are the trails there and then there's the disc golf area and all that. So the conversation in the M S P meeting, as we'll talk about on December eleventh, deals specifically with the rest of those uses and not necessarily the beginner's course that is there.
Master plan does not include the bike park itself.
It does include it, but it's not proposing anything different. Now, if there was a large sentiment that said that we don't need a bike park at all, well, that could be incorporated into the master plan. I, the, the two sort of go together, but one doesn't drive the other.
Why can't we just let it be over there?
What is the master plan? Is it what is on the survey that people deem it to be? Or is it what you guys as the council deem it to be?
Well, that's, that's why we're having a survey. There is input from private citizens. There's input from the rec board and there's input from planning commission, board of supervisors. There, there's as much input as we can possibly get. We don't make a decision. We put together the information and that is presented to the decision makers.
But the plan.
And who is the, I'm sorry. The, who is the decision makers?
Supervisors, employees.
The three of you?
Yes.
The supervisors?
Yeah.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Why don't you level it? I mean, it's weird. I mean, you can't, weeds never been cut down. You realize you're gonna have to.
Okay, I just have one more question.
Sure.
When Jim Delaval, after he did it, relinquished it or whatever his job was, the township took it over. The township was supposed to be the ones that were keeping up with the bike park. Because that is written somewhere in your minutes. When he relinquished it, you guys were paying him free hunt, whatever it was for a while, he was taking care of it. Then he relinquished whatever he was doing back to the township. The township were the ones that were supposed to be taking care of it. The township is the one that let it go. So now because it was let go, now we're all.
It's the only one who was on this, on this uh of the supervisor who was actually around through part of this.
And who was it? You?
Hmm?
Was it you, Mister Lovenheim?
Yeah, I was around through part, not all of it. I wasn't around when it started. I was around when um, um, Jim, what is it, De La Val and Val came in. And um was willing to take over the building of bike park for about less than half of what the estimate was and.
And then he signed off to the township.
Well, wait a minute. Um, before that, what happened was he decided to build the track out of clay and he claimed that clay was the best thing for it. That's what we should do. And this is between us and Middle Smithfield. We went with his advice and it was fine for the first year. And then what happened was we had two years of terrible rains and a lot of it washed away and we were left with what was left. I think at that point we took it over. And also that's the point where the conservation district came in and started pointing out all the things that had been faultily done. Um, that weren't up to standards for uh stormwater drainage that we would have to do. And that's pretty much where it stands now, isn't it, John? And we have not done that yet because the question was, you wanna do that or do you want a master plan so you see how this fits in?
Yes. Can I, can I provide quick context before you speak, John? The township did work with Mills Smithfield, do a brief remediation with dirt sculpt, I believe, at, at one time, uh, just after twenty twenty. After that, though, we knew that the issue still persisted, so we wanted to make it usable. And so then it became clear that conservationists were saying that's really not the case. You need to do a complete overhaul. The master site plan, as John says, doesn't really drive the bus on the existing use. The master site plan deals mostly with the rest of the acreage there. The master site plan does not guarantee that something will change. The master site plan is the vehicle by which you can provide context when applying for state or other funding to do the master site. So it's not a guarantee. It is just a distilled down version of what the public opinion is. And you utilize that in order to get extra funds. So, so like the, the C two, P two grant that I mentioned earlier that we got from Marshall's Falls. You had to have a, a master site development plan in order to secure the additional funding via uh D C N R for that. So it's really step one in the D C N R process if you're going to be constructing a park with improvements.
And it, yeah, another factor was that after it started eroding, the only way really to upgrade it would be to, to pave it. We had um, we had estimates for that. I think they went up to about sixty thousand dollars. Which we just don't wanna say.
You don't pave a bike park. You don't pave a bike park.
I'm sorry, what?
You don't pave a bike park.
Well, it's not, that's not true. If you go up to uh Battle Morris, there's a beautiful bike park right near the railroad tracks where they spent a million dollars on it and that's all paved. Seems to work very well.
Is it at Monley?
But it never got paved because again, if there was a master plan, if we had it in all this remedial work for the conservation district, there's no point in throwing money into something where we didn't know if, if it was going to be sufficient to make it work. So that's why it stands where it is and nothing else was spent.
Why not level it?
My, my stated position is let's fix what we have and then go from there because, because the intent is, is not to, it, it was purchased with brand money. The township needs to do things right the first time when it purchased it. It did not when it was constructed and that is why we're still dealing with this. That is what we're trying to fix. That's all I'm trying to fix. I'm looking forward to hearing the master site plan and we're gonna have that out on December eleventh. We're gonna hear more about that and I'm gonna let the process play through, but I'm not gonna speculate wildly about, you know, whether or not we should level it or any of that stuff. I'm, I'm gonna wait until we hear from other folks and go from there.
Well, it does sound as though by May, nothing's gonna happen to the, the bike, the actual track, all the bike track, um, until after we've made fairly significant progress on the master plan, right? Which not do until the end of twenty twenty-five, but um.
Well, I think that's accurate. Uh, we should get the permit, I'm gonna say in the next couple of months. That doesn't mean you have to do anything.
Okay.
But you do have a permit and you can do something when you decide to.
Cause it's good for five years, right? This is an N P D E S permit.
So what I'm saying is getting the permit doesn't mean we have to do the, the repairs to it. If master plan, which maybe gets finalized in June of twenty twenty-five after a significant input and maybe that plan says no bike park at all, then we level it. Um, and maybe it says it's important and integral and then we repair it with the permit we have, right?
So I could go there and like, well, we don't know.
You'd have to ask the supervisors twenty years ago, who won? There was a conversation about that, but.
Anyway, that, so I'm looking forward to everyone being there on December eleventh so we can have a full conversation on this subject.
Yes. Alright, alright. So I'm gonna proceed to the manager.
I just have a quick question.
One last one, Tim.
So you're saying that you have to do a um drainage study or remedies drainage or whatever this is?
Right.
Is that gonna prevent flooding in that area?
Yes, you, you, you have to. So when you, when you get the N P D E S permit, it has to be the same or better, just like any other land development, but realistically, it's not usable as it is because it will flood. So we need to have the permit to make sure that it will not, you know.
It won't repair, it won't touch against the Delaware flooding up over it.
Right.
But local.
Cause like inside of it, the piping is just not where it needs to be.
They had it, when, when they built the bike park the first time, they did have an N P D S permit. However, Mister Delaval, he was probably good at constructing a bike park, but he wasn't good at constructing the necessary stormwater management improvements that went along with it. Uh, hence the deterioration of the track. And we have gone in, analyzed what it is. Uh, we haven't deviated a whole lot from the original N P D S permit, but we do have to put everything back together the way it should have been done the first time, which is what the intent of the new N P D S permit is.
Correct. Okay, last thing and then I'm moving on.
Um, I have two quick things. Um, first off, the bike park. Who engineered that? Wasn't that you, John, that signed up on the plans?
Nope, I would not be.
Who signed off on it?
I don't know. It was an engineer, I believe, out of Scranton. I don't know, but it was not our office. We didn't design it.
So who on the town, the township reviewed it? Did that go through you, but not all those things go through?
This was a different, different procedure.
None of us were there at the time. I've been here the longest and when I came in, it was already going and they were already trying to find somebody to build it.
Right. That wasn't your previous firm that did that?
No, it was not. Just like uh, we talked about Marshall Falls. There's an engineer who does that. We don't, we don't review their work.
I had asked you that.
You reviewed our work, though.
Not, not for that type of situation. We, we do not.
Like otherwise, anybody could just come in and say.
The township doesn't go through.
My engineer said this is.
The township doesn't, the township does not go through its own land development process.
No, but they have to approve the land development process that the developer comes to you.
These, these are, these are, these are.
You can go build this.
These are public improvements.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is the township doesn't go through the township in order to approve its own land development or any of these improvements. So the boards of, the boards of supervisors in Middle Smithfield and Smithfield, none of which are still here, at least from the, the first uh, that first approval.
Robert was there.
Yeah, Robert was not there when the original plan went through. None of us were here in two thousand and three when it was purchased either.
The bike park wasn't put up until two thousand and seventeen?
Right, so what I'm saying, Robert was elected in two thousand and fifteen. The plan had already begun. He took office in January of two thousand and sixteen. But I suspect that no matter what I say, it's not going to sufficiently answer these inquiries. We need to see the data. We need to see the rest of the plans. And that's what I wanna see. I, I'm not gonna speculate. I wish I knew why previous supervisors made awful decisions, but they did. They're not here to tell us why they did.
Two, two meetings ago, though, Mister Trust, I had asked you if there was a specific reason that you guys were chosen to do this plan for the bike park because Bowser and James that you previously worked for did a first line.
Right, that, that was a master plan, just like the master plan here. That was not the detailed engineered plan. The detailed engineered plan was prepared by an engineer. I'll get you the answer for the next meeting.
Okay.
It was, it was prepared by an engineer up near Wexparra or Scranton. They did not come to the township for permits. They did get an N P D E S permit out of the county. Uh, and to my knowledge, that's all the permitting that they got.
Okay, so just to confirm, uh, Delaval did not build the bike park based off of the master plan that
That is correct.
Previously firm created.
That is correct.
It's just used to go to get the funding.
That is correct.
Okay.
Then there was a detailed plan prepared by another engineer, like I said, up north. That's where it was built, supposed to be built from.
Just to clarify, a master plan is not like detailed engineering plans. It's like.
It's, it's almost like a sketch plan, okay.
It was, it was used to get the funding. That's what you guys need, right? So you didn't build it to spec based on.
There's no spec.
The, the long story short is both townships thought that the actual professionals that bitted it would, you know, were too high, so they asked this guy to do it. And they did it on the cheap and now we're all paying for it.
How did that the first we go? That's what has been done with that.
You're gonna move on.
Do you think we could please answer that?
It's part of the, it's part of discussions on December eleven, eleven.
Yes.
I have one more question, not about the bike park, for John.
Okay.
So, John, um, back to my other question about Healthy Minds. Um, if the supervisor had a question about what was coming up, would you need to be prepared to answer that question for them?
Yes.
So, and you recall information from twenty fifteen pretty vividly about, so is there a reason why that you don't remember anything about the Healthy Minds sketch plan? It seems odd to me that you don't remember that, but you have the kind of call.
Hold on, I'm not, I'm not entertaining this. But this is, we're not playing mind games.
I, I think, I think if he needs to be able to answer you guys, he also needs to be.
Well, guess what? It's on the planning commission agenda for Thursday and when they ask first because it's going to them. Well, guess what? It's on the planning commission agenda for Thursday and when they ask first, because it's going to them, he's gonna answer the question. We're not, it's not on our agenda today, so we're not gonna ask about it.
Yeah, you could be more polite to the.
You know what? That is the pot calling the kettle black. I am not doing this.
Doing what?
I'm good. We are going to the township manager's report. Julia is not here, so we don't need one today. The environmental advisory council report, I will defer to Pat as she is the chair.
Yeah, I went to bird too. My co-chair who uh was here for the meeting and I was not.
Hi.
Great. Hi Brett.
Hi Brett.
Lovely seeing you all here this evening. Um the E A C has been out and about. We did a lovely visit at the Penarjil. Waste Management Site. I did come home shower. But they really got a thing going on down there. It's state yard. It's it's a model for the entire nation. And they're, they're standing now. They're gonna have a uh. A recycling, adding recycling plant on the premises. The people are very friendly and informative and really know what they're doing down there. It's a huge thing. It's almost, I remember the kills from Staten Island and this is like. I mean, that was a big thing too, but I know we had a really, really nice visit. They're very cooperative with the local community. And they support the local community with a whole variety of financial and and. Programs that really help out the Penarjil area. And so we gotta go into that with them. We'll continue with that related. Also, I went up to the local conservation district office of. Christina Haney runs that place and she's great. She really knows her stuff. And they're very friendly. It was one of these offices out in, out in the woods somewhere and when they get a guest, they're really excited. Anyway, so they gave me a bunch of literature which I will use on the E A C's reach out outreach program. Like that there, that's about it. Oh, I'm more curious. People are curious when the lighting. Lighting uh regulations are gonna come into effect. And well, we're a fire. Store. We'll ask about it later. All right, thank you. That's it.
I'm I'm glad you had a chance to visit that facility because uh I was there several years ago and I've been. Praising it ever since and people look at me like, what? What are you talking about? It's adult, isn't it? No, it's, it's a very high tech facility and. And I hope we can all go back next summer when the materials resource facility is open because. It will be one of the most automated in the United States with robotics and spectronics and. You you won't believe what they can do and how they can sort recycled materials that come from, from your trash can, but it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, their their technology is awesome.
What people think of it is a, it's a waste facility. And what's happening is because of what's going on in recycling is these facilities are becoming sort of the high tech. Answer to what Silicon Valley is doing, but in a very practical sense of trying to preserve and reuse materials.
It's a beautiful thing. It's a sound, but it's a beautiful thing.
Yeah, thank you. Great, thank you. Uh Tara Mazanari is not here this evening, but in lieu of a formal report. Um I just wanna say it's great that six eleven is open. The mayors of Delaware Water Gap in Portland, I believe, had a nice parade when it opened, so now. It's uh all set, thank God, and uh I was gonna analyze it.
I think the light, they had an issue with the light the other day, but.
Yeah.
There there's probably some glitches.
Yeah, but at least it's open.
Yes, I think she was sharing information that like bikes. Were going through and not supposed to be or.
Yeah, bikes are, it's narrow.
Yeah.
Well, but that, then now there's signs up saying they can't.
Yeah, exactly. And no trucks either. No, nothing like too wide. It didn't narrow.
Yeah.
Oh, that's it. I didn't know about no trucks. Definitely saw some, you know. Yeah. Well, good on that. Uh supervisors comments, Michael, Robert, anything you wanna know?
I just know uh. I just, I'm honest, maybe a question for Ron, just on like sort of the legality of it because. At our last meeting, we opened our. Our hearing on the. Ordinance relates bed breakfasts and it was scheduled to reopen in the December meeting. That correct?
Yes.
But then um. That was all with the intention that potentially the, what we had discussed here. Uh was enough for Julia to edit it and send it back to the planning commission. Um I got a draft of that and I suggested that. It should probably come back here for us to discuss again.
Yeah.
In a public forum. So does, should we be like closing that hearing? How does that work, Ron?
Well, you left it open at the time of the last meeting or wasn't here?
You were not here, correct. So we left it open because we wanted to save on the advertising. We thought we'd reopen because we at the time thought maybe. What was discussed would be enough for her to edit it and send back to planning commissions. For review to give them the thirty days they needed or whatever it was, but. I mean, I, what I saw is like, I still think more people want input on this and we should not send it yet until it comes back here. And so Julie did not send it to the planning commissions. It's not on their agendas. So even if we pick it up in December, it won't have been reviewed. So maybe just in December, we close it and then have a discussion or how does that work?
Well, you.
It is continuing.
If you're gonna change the ordinance after your discussions, it's gotta go back to the planning commission.
Correct.
Or review.
But you have to close the hearing and then reopen it? A closed hearing and then have a new hearing? I just wanna understand a lot.
So that we get a chance to make changes before it goes to the planning.
Right.
If you did not close the last hearing, you don't have to reopen.
Yeah, we just have a chance on the next one.
On the next one, so you don't have to readvertise.
Okay.
At that meeting day, though.
Okay.
But you know, if you.
So even if we, if there was general consensus at the next meeting, which is December, was that December eleventh as well? No?
No, the next, our next meeting is this uh. Little bad one. I don't have that one listed on here.
Anyway, in December, whenever we stated it was. We then paused the meeting. If, let's say there's like, okay, general consensus, Julie goes, makes the changes as suggested. But we then we postpone again. I mean, we don't close it, right? Then it goes back to the. To the planning commissions?
If you made changes to the, yeah.
Yeah, there's already been a dozen changes that have been suggested.
And then you just note, and then you notify the public at that meeting in December. Second Tuesday, I believe, is gonna be December ten. That you then say this is when the next meeting will be.
Okay.
Now, if you don't know when the next meeting.
But don't you have to republish the new ordinance anyway?
Not necessarily. You wanna publish your ordinance, that's gonna be the final draft.
Right.
Or you know, you don't wanna keep republishing reversions and revisions and.
All right.
One, the one you're.
Gotcha, one you found. Okay.
Cause we will still have to do that.
That's my only question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Cool. All right, I don't have anything, Robert?
Don't be.
Okay. So Alex is here to talk to us about data center criteria. He put together some information and a comparison of the current uh standards versus potentially new standards. So Alex.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. So as you recall, the last meeting, uh we had discussed how. You know, I can work with the board to help protect the community by adding additional standards for this use. Known as data centers, the board had deliberated. And um what you have before you is a columnist has possible new standards for this use and the existing standards and it goes. Section by section by section, starting with definitions. And it is seven pages and it'd be the board's pleasure. We can go down as far as the board would like to discuss the possibilities as you go through each one and if you have any questions, I'm here to help.
Do you, I don't have much time to have, but do we uh? Do we have this? Can this go on the, on the board or no?
On the, on the big screen?
Yeah, do you like, do you wanna go through?
I don't, I I. It's a little tricky with the big screen. I I'm prepared to go over what you have verbally with you all here. Um this evening, just to talk about some of what you're seeing.
I mean, basically, I mean. And for the good. So I don't think they see this. We had discussed at the last meeting that. I, or maybe I reached out to Julia specifically, then I wanted um to make it easier to see changes in ordinances. So Julia is now for us presenting like current ordinance and then changes, cause track changes can be tough, cause a lot of time you like. Delete a whole paragraph. But you only change like two words and it looks like you changed the whole paragraph. Anyway, so we're having these documents. So like, as you can see, for example, this. It's like current ordinance and there's just nothing here and then these are a bunch of new conditions set. That's why I was just, I really like this new thing that Julia's now starting to do for, for us as we look at amending ordinances. Cause it's all, it was us to compare and contrast.
This is what will go on the website when we're.
This will go on the website, okay.
Once we kind of flesh out a little more here.
All right.
Then we can have an actual draft, cause this is all just stuff he found.
Okay.
Yeah, this is like a combination of the best from all the various standards that you would look at at your previous meeting and discuss. You, you previously you had a spreadsheet of like five columns and now we've condensed five columns into two. To try to get uh the board into the, into a position where they could more, you know, affirmatively deliberate on the standards. So you know, definitions, for example, there were, you know, these, these were written some time ago, so words like network. Servers, appliances, generators, electrical substitutions weren't in your original definition and based on the ordinances that I reviewed. I'd recommend adding those, those words. And then the board had talked a little bit about the possibility of conditional use. So this is a principal permitted use in the economic development district, which is the red one on the zoning map currently. And it's also permitted in the M one, which is the industrial district. And one possibility is the board could consider whether or not over certain square footage, they could, if you go into conditional use, which would trigger a hearing. Which, you know, you've been through this year already with one of those. So that's something for the board to consider. It's actually one of the first. Items for the board to deliver it on, whether or not you want, do you wanna just have them all regardless of square footage as conditional use or do you wanna have it trigger a certain. Square footage, forty thousand square feet, a hundred thousand square feet, a hundred thou, a hundred and fifty thousand.
What did we do with the other, the other big box uses the? I know in the M one zone.
The M one.
They are, well, they're all, most of them are still permitted in E V, but they are. Uh under, um you know, like I think a hundred thousand square feet.
I mean, for me, just putting it as a conditional use, all that does, doesn't. Doesn't necessarily change the legal. Allowability of having it there. So what's important is the standards along with conditional use. If you just say, well, now it's a conditional use. If there's zero standards around it, then you have to let it go.
Right.
Um, cause we're otherwise, we'll appeal and we'll lose.
We're building it in like I like, I mean, we'll get to it in a second. The main entrance design, how we wanted it to look like. Fiat office space and a facade and not just. You know, concrete buildings, you know, and this would have to be.
But man, I think it should be a condition, I I mean, I think it should probably be a condition use, assuming we have. Sufficient standards that would allow. For it not to get approved if it wasn't meeting those standards. But I guess, I mean, that's also. Ron, that's also me not always understanding um under what situations. We can deny those conditional uses. Um if they prove they've met all the standards effectively, it just means that it. It's gone through a longer period of time and it's gone through public hearing and all that stuff, but you're still able to, you have to move forward with it.
Well, if the conditional use meets the township's ordinances or the application. Then it is presumed to be. Permitted. However, there can be objectors who will raise an issue and say that. The problems of health, safety, welfare for this use are more than what you would customarily expect.
More than a typical data center.
And as a result, uh that could then act that presumption and township could then deny on that basis.
Now we have to be proved that that particular data center or was gonna be worse than a normal data center.
Oh yeah, that for, that particular use, whether it be a data center or.
Right, I'm talking about data centers here. Okay.
May I ask what gentleman in writing was his experience and his education to do this?
Alex is our conservation and recreation director. He's got enormous experience dealing with.
Data center?
He's dealing with municipalities and sustainability based ordinances. And I think that he's more than earned his keep on that, so I'm gonna let him describe this to us and then we'll make determinations from there.
Yeah, most, most of what you're seeing before you, Mr. Chairman, are, are basically copied from other ordinances. Very little has been synthesized de novo here.
Right.
What you're looking at is more so, you know, structurally organizing in a fashion that's consistent with your ordinance. So that it would fit into your, you know, because this is in the zoning ordinance in the schedule of uses, right? And so. I mean, yeah, so basically the board, you know, will have to decide whether it's conditional use, is there a square footage and then main entrance features? These are some reasonable standards that address that. Um there's foundation plantings or enhanced landscaping, for, for example, that some ordinances um have for main entrance features such as. You know, you have to have landscaping around the entrance or in lieu of that gives you an um, an escape clause for the developer. They could. Increase the density of landscaping for the rest of the project by twenty percent, sort of like a, you know, one or the other kind of thing.
Right.
Building facades, penetration, there's like windows and setbacks and this on page two. Uh up, up, up on the first section there. This is pretty standard for most of these ordinance that, that they have those, you know. Building material pattern, texture, color, accent material. And then windows and doors. This is not a typical for data center standards, so.
And very similar to existing. Standards for the zone, but not this use. Yeah, well, when we talk about like the major mixed uses, you know, we have the facade requirements. I think it's like every ninety feet or something, every fifty feet. It's recessed and it's changed. The material's different. So I guess what I'm saying is. Augmenting that for this use specifically.
For this use specifically, correct. Or four figure.
I mean. It's, it's nothing but more standards than we have now, so that's. Good. I have concern with the uh, you got a bunch of stuff here in screening requirements.
Yeah, the next section, equipment visual screening.
No, it was later on. Just. Re, when you reference industrial uses, we just gotta make sure that that gets defined because we don't, we have an M one zone. But different things are allowed in M one. So what, what defines industrial use? Good. I know you pulled it from another. Ordinance, another township ordinance, but I don't know that we ever defined industrial use in our.
Where is it?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly which.
Section A, you're talking about screening requirements. So you have to do this if you're not currently next to an industrial use. Well, let's make sure we define industrial use, cause otherwise someone's gonna say. It's not an industrial use and you don't define industrial use, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree. So I just, which one that I, 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 I need to.
So the next section is equipment visual screening. So these data centers, as, as you recall from the presentation last a couple of weeks ago. They have a lot of equipment on site and that equipment is industrial nature and it can negatively impact the character of the community if not properly screened. So a lot of these ordinances have some provisions and criteria for visually screening the equipment. And so here's an example of that. So, you know. I don't know if I wanna read the whole thing, but I'll read the ground level equipment and electrical substations. Any ground level equipment as well as any accessory electrical substations must be screened for view. From abutting lots and right of way by visually solid wall or building. Substations shall be screened from adjacent major roads or residentially zoned properties with a ten foot ball, ten foot tall opaque fence or a similarly sized wall. So that's intended to protect the character of the community by doing so, as opposed to just having this. Especially in your community where you have this industry, this is economic district that is directly uh adjacent to residential. Properties, you're probably wanna, gonna wanna consider something like that because you don't wanna be the property owner where you have an electrical substation two hundred feet from your property and you got it and you don't have anything blocking your view.
Well, let's say it's only ten feet. Should, should we potentially correlate it with the. Acreage or this, the size of the substation? I mean, I don't know exactly how you. Do that. I have no idea if it's done where. Like I, I know that they build structures that. Essentially enclose them that look like regular buildings and they're just walls.
Yeah.
Is that, is that an option uh to, to adjust this language where it says like?
Exposed.
Yeah. But I don't, I would prefer them not exposed.
Yeah, you, you can enclose them completely.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So that they are. You know, unless there is a. Currently in the draft criteria here, if a full enclosure is being mechanically unfeasible as evidenced. Then a, a screen shall go in its place. So there may be certain circumstances where. Then a a screen shall go in its place, so there may be certain circumstances where they are.
Actually, a building around it would be a screen.
There's one at the World Trade Center that's underground, so you can do a lot of different things with them.
Right, okay.
Yeah, just as a reminder, the reason that supervisors are doing this is anticipatory. It's always good practice to anticipate emerging technologies and emerging economic changes. And right now, AI technology is the burgeoning field and any municipality where you have these high tensile lines running through zones where these are permitted uses. You don't do run the risk of one of these being submitted and if and if they do get submitted under current standards and you don't have these in place. Then it's a permitted use.
That's purely cooperation.
Hmm, yeah. Right, and so the next, not not to digress, but the next section is adjacent to residential. In my opinion, this is arguably one of the more important ones because. Your current ordinance does have some standards for what happens if one of these is proposed adjacent to residential, but it's limited to no barbed wire, eraser. And a couple of other provisions with regards to generators, but there's no setback. So a lot of these ordinances have setbacks, physical setbacks from the use. If they're if they're permitted on a parcel that's adjacent to residential, this search to residential use.
Right.
And so I I highly recommend that at their minimum. And there's also um. Also on page three, there is setbacks for the equipment itself, so that way you don't have a substation. You know, right next to somebody's property, they're setback three hundred feet, generator setback three hundred feet, that's gonna mitigate the impacts. So those setbacks are physically simply physical. And then the next section is fencing standards. You have currently, the only standard you have fencing, which isn't bad, is that you have no barbed wire shall be visible from neighboring residential or institutional properties or districts. The proposition is to keep that, but also add that the fencing shall be high quality design materials that are architecturally compatible with the design of the principal structures. And surrounding landscape and coloring, and that they shall provide evidence to the township that that is being met. So it's not just take your word for it, they actually have to provide credible evidence to the municipality.
And and all of the visual stuff that we're talking about, and then all. I know we had intended on requiring in in our next subdivision land development ordinance update.
Hmm.
Uh, requiring elevations visuals during the submission, so people can actually see exactly what it's going to look like and not just. Right there.
Yeah, that can be a provision added into this as well. There's some language from other ordinances that I saw that that um spoke to what you just mentioned. I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to say it off the top of my head, but I do do know where you can find it.
Got a problem, real quick.
Two, two comments. One is, I think it's wonderful that you're digging into this because it really is a booming issue. Uh, the other thing is, have you looked, and I guess Alex is, at what some of the models are now of these um. Construction sites.
Right.
To get some better idea of what what's good and what's bad.
Oh yeah, well, and all of these that Alex told were directly from other ordinances that deal with these. Um, and they're mostly in other spots like Northern Virginia and they deal with them a lot. But there's not a lot of sites that can actually house them based on the power demand.
I think it's great that you're looking into this personally.
Uh, um, is there any contingency or environmental impact study based on the current. On specs of a proposed data center? Uh, it's so, it's developing so fast.
Right.
We're so resource hungry, but a a full environmental study based on what these people, whoever proposes might be something we might want. Ah, for for sure, I mean, it's, it at at some point, I imagine that those will be generally required, same time like a traffic study. I don't wanna uh. Get too off topic here, but real quick, John, in other municipalities that you review, land development plans, they have some measure of an environmental impact study.
Yes.
At the some time of submission, I mean, I know we have some currently that deal more like with wildlife specifically and not necessarily. Um, any other natural resources, so have you seen any that are a little bit more in depth? And what standards do they really?
I think water resources are the big consideration for this type of use.
Right.
Uh, that that should be closely looked at. Uh, the actual construction is gonna have the same impact on steep slopes, woodlands. What lands as any other large building, so that's not. That's not really relative.
It's really kind of baked in.
Right, right. I would say that for this type of use, the water resources would be my concern.
Right.
You you have the power resources, but frankly, at the township level, we don't, we don't get into that.
Right. Right. Sound, sound, these. Oh, sound, yeah, sound, we just talked about the previous section with the enclosures of stuff plus. My last section. The uh, yeah, we'll reference the noise ordinance when we get to the next part. All right, so let's.
Yes, so the next section is buffer yard requirements. So the intent of the buffer yard for uh criteria for this type of use is to visually obscure. Or screen the data, data centers from continuous, so it's not necessarily good enough just to have it separated three hundred feet from residential if it's just a prairie. The township may also want to consider some criteria for putting landscaping in to prevent, provide a screen. And um, so you know, there's a, there's A through F of screen, screening requirements and then um. There's, there's also provisions for stormwater management facilities um or end utilities are not to be included in the buffer yards. So they can't put a big detention base in there and say, oh, well, you know, it's, it's okay because it's in the buffer yards. That kind of prevents that from happening. And there's also provisions in here to keep the existing benefits for like keeping the existing trees.
Right.
On a, on a property so you can reduce it by fifty feet if a if mature existing trees, berms or other walls are included in that. So it gives them a little bit of flexibility and but it does set pretty strict criteria for buffer plantings being evergreen trees with a minimum height of eight feet. So these are definitely gonna be um, it's definitely a, you know, very protective of the community. I will say that um as as drafted. And then the next section goes into sound requirements, so your current ordinance does have some provisions for sound. Um. And those are good, but they're a little out of date. And I found that it would be ideal to update them a bit and also. Like, for example, the previous ordinance had referenced a study from nineteen fifty eight. It is recommended to um update that to the one up for nineteen ninety six. And then there's a bunch of criteria such as a noise study for this type of use, that's the main. The rest of this is there's a noise study that be submitted with the land development plan. And then there's a couple of provisions that are strongly encouraged, which in ordinance language, it means. Thanks, but no thanks, but it's still something the township could put in there to just try to help maintain that relationship with the land development submission. And then I um saw that some ordinances define what intermittent sounds are, so your current ordinance. Has something that says objectionable sounds of an intermittent nature shall be controlled to prevent them from becoming a nuisance and then. This now defines what an intermittent sound is, that they, if if they exceed a maximum of ten decibels above background noise levels at a frequency. Of occurrence greater than once every hour.
Did you get that from someone?
That was, yeah, from, I believe that's. Actually, um, I have to look into that. That one I might have, I might have synthesized that one.
It was ten, I'm just surprised.
I might, yeah, I might, I might have synthesized that one. That's a good question.
And then the other thing is, so like, there's a whole octave band table that it already exists in our, in our ordinance.
Hmm, which is good.
Is that from specifically on? Under what standards?
Is that from the noise ordinance?
This is separate from the noise ordinance and I think it's better than the noise ordinance because the noise ordinance sets a flat decibel. I think it's sixty five, whereas this deals with different, um, like, if you ever heard a generator humming. It deals with sort of the humming and vibrating noises in these octave bands in addition to sound pressure. It's actually more protective.
We should, it doesn't, right now, the thing that needs to be added here would be reference to our noise ordinance.
You may not need to because the sound pressure levels.
But I would just reference it and say in addition to the table below and what's the term, what's the legal term you often use, the the? The worst of the two. Yeah, you must be in compliance with the.
Oh, it's quicker.
The more stricter of the two.
Yeah.
Male extended, yeah.
To be good, just that protects us, especially if down the line, the sound ordinance gets updated and someone forgets to come over here and update it, you want to reference them both.
Yeah, definitely.
And so we should probably take it, the shall or or strongly encouraged part and factor in those types of clauses here. We should, in the next draft that we look at, should probably be mandatory, like you said, and not encouraging.
It's entirely your goal as board, whether or not you want to.
Well, I mean, we needed to be clearer than, I don't know, maybe they have less strict rules by which they can prove or deny things where it came from. But I think at this point. Probably C isn't necessary under twelve, but B, you know, at the time, like, we should have like submission standards and like outline. That these things are required to be met and then delineate them all under their respective categories. Otherwise, I think a lot of this makes.
The the next section. Um, and I and I can, and I agree with what you said. And the next section is equipment, sound requirements and testing times. There's a bunch of criteria for in these ordinances for. Basically, when can the generators be tested? And it's based on the time of year because of the way that the daylight hours work so. The generated testing is limited between five P M and seven A M between May first and September thirtieth. Between October first and April thirtieth, it's eleven A M to five P M. And then there's provisions here for um. Basically, temporary, putting together an acoustic barrier so that the sound, the equipment is soundproof. Now that's maybe, that's very protective of the community if you were to put that in there, I would say that. Maybe um for data centers adjacent to residential properties, um. You know, they have to be screened. I think that might be a little redundant from what we talked about before. Um, so there's, there's, these are just more sound provisions and then it goes on to lighting, which basically just references the, you know, upcoming lighting ordinance. Then the last section, section fifteen is, um, actually, it's not the last section, this is almost the last. On page six, emissions and ground vibrations, these are your existing criteria, which are actually pretty good. So no, no degree reason to get rid of those. And then on page seven. You have um. You know, the last, last, there's a section all just on utilities as well, which is um.
Oh, they have seven.
You don't have seven on there?
I have six of seven through section fifteen.
Yeah. Well, the the next section, there is an entire section just on utilities, so the. Um, so basically, if the applicant would have demonstrated to the township that there is sufficient power, that it's not gonna affect residential communities, that they're gonna be drawing. You know, significant numbers of megawatts.
That's page four, good, it's on page four.
Okay, that's, so that's the next one I wanted to talk about is um, yeah, the utilities. I'm not sure how I skipped over that, but here we are. Um, so anyway, there's provisions for power where you demonstrate how power will be provided. And then water, which John previously alluded to. Applicants shall demonstrate the adequacy of water for firefighting situations without impacting private wells. Construction activities, you know, shall not impact wa- um water supply and then that water shall be a public utility. So you're not, you know, overpapping a well and creating a huge conit depression where nearby residences start to, you know, run dry in a drought like recurring.
Right. Well, our existing ordinances require of the installation of. The hydrants and all that stuff, or do we need to augment?
I defer that to John, question to John, to the fire department.
You know, again, I don't, I don't know the last time we had an ordinance, but probably for the gateway center was when we had it.
Yeah, because they have.
They have hydrants there, it's all, the only way they work, well, there's two ways they work. Obviously, the easiest and best way is if it's all B C R A.
Right, I think that's exactly where that is.
If for some reason this data center were to go into some isolated area. And they had to have fire protection, they'd have to do their own stable pipe and pump and everything else, and that's where I would get concerned. And then we probably went on hydrogeologic tests.
I don't even know, do those things even use water to for?
They, the older, the older ones use them for cooling. I think they're trying to get away from that now.
Right, they are. Well, so where I would say then, um. We don't, we have to allow types of uses. You don't have to allow every specific kind. I would say we shouldn't permit ones uh that do not utilize public water.
I believe, I have seen other, I have seen other ordinances that limit certain uses in their township. The availability of public water and so on.
Access, yeah. I would, I would like to do that very much with this use because they, you never, they trust a well.
Right.
Because then if they really want it somewhere where it's not gonna be permitted or it doesn't seem feasible already. They are going to have to pay for those improvements, we will not be required to subsidize it.
So that's everything I had planned on talking about. What's the board's pleasure on that steps?
Well, I think the general tightening up, I mean, the feedback that we had, I, and before we make a decision on whether or not it should be a conditional use. I think we need to evaluate uh at least one more thing, which is if we're having all this inherently strict. Um. Con- conditions or or requirements. What is the sense that it requires a conditional use unless it's going to be theoretically more impactful? Than what we're already anticipating? I'm trying to wonder like what, what added flexibility other than square footage do you need?
I don't know, I also, I sort of feel like the the size of such a project, it's not like a. A small business owner where a conditional use hearing is gonna, you know, crush them and not allow them to do this.
Right.
So I'm sort of inclined to like, you could do a conditional use and. Um, certainly, I'd be inclined to say in an M one, it might not need a conditional use and an E D it does. And R one or two, obviously, it's not allowed.
Right.
The other thing to look at is where we land with public opinion and with everything on some of these setbacks. So I think if we increase some of the setbacks from two hundred feet to three hundred feet, if it's next to them, R one or two, I probably saw that somewhere. Um, you know, that also limits where it's even possible to have some of these things.
Correct.
Um, which we have to make sure we don't go so far that it makes it an impossible use also, because then.
Then they can invalidate it.
Then they can go anywhere, so if you make it so strict that it doesn't, it, there's nowhere for them to be, then. That makes it like illegal for us to do that, right, effectively?
Correct.
Um, so we don't want to get. Um, I don't think that's the case right now. I think there's a few places where we could do it, but let's just make sure we don't get that to six hundred feet. And then, and then it becomes impossible. But I I think that's gonna be one of the points that I'm gonna want to look at and understand because really what we're talking about is protecting R one, R two. Um. Areas, um.
I mean, I'd like to see when we evaluate what these, let's say, these hypothetical setbacks are. I'd like to see what parcels are actually eligible for this type of development anyway. And that's why I'm saying like, I I don't think there's a desire for these fifty thousand feet or hundred thousand feet data centers anymore. They want them to be. You know, two hundred fifty thousand square, I mean, we haven't seen.
Huge.
Yeah, they want them to be that that large because the the investment is huge. So, you know, I don't know, what is the sense of saying, okay, if the maximum building size is a hundred thousand square feet, which is relatively small for the use? What does that do?
Yeah, do not call the company.
Christine and then.
Is it possible, I don't know if it is, um, on whether it's allowed in M one or E D as a conditional use? Or if those, if any parcel within the allowable or conditional use area border on a residential. Is it possible to exclude? Those properties that are just inside of the R one or R two? Because for the people that live on the border and if they build right on the border, I'd just like having an R one or R two.
Probably better to do feet because otherwise you could just subdivide and create a narrow strip and I'm not next to it anymore, right? You'd be allowed to do that. Like, I'm gonna subdivide, this is still B D, next to you, R one, I'm not next to you anymore.
You could build in a, but you can't do that.
Well, but that's why by doing a a number of feet from where the building is, is gonna be more protected.
Like if you're two hundred feet versus three hundred or four hundred or something like that from.
Well, I I don't know what, I was gonna say, I don't know what that number is.
Correct.
But to to your point, doing that won't necessarily protect you. In fact, if, if it doesn't, doing a a.
Well, depending on how you work it.
Yeah.
I mean, you could.
Because we we have to change all the ordinances with the maximum size of a plot land, I mean.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you're going to be able to effectively do what you're saying because then you're. I don't, I don't, I don't think you're going to be able to effectively do what you're saying, because then you're basically excluding and making undevelopable. All this property that was already zoned for that type of development.
Well, it's not, not necessarily for, you know. Uh, industrial or not that, none of it is allowed. To something that is, is behemoth and.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's why.
Well, that's what he gets with what, what's that, what is that number? Is that number three hundred feet? Is it two hundred feet? Wha- what's the number that we think makes? Makes sense away from a, a line of an R one two, we're not saying a line from another property, we're saying a line. The, the two hundred feet from the, from the line of the R one.
That's why I think we should talk about acreage requirements on, on the lot size beyond, cuz. With your standard lot in the economic development zone, no one's gonna build a ten thousand foot, you know, that's a hard feat one.
I mean, there's probably like, there's probably, you can probably count on your half number of places where it's possible to do it, right? Probably possible, I mean, sure, with the, in terms of, with this, it'd be possible, Gateway, Cog would be possible, Mountain Manor. Um, sure, there's a few others, and in the, I don't even know if it'd be possible in our M one because of all the flatlands.
Yeah, that's really, that, that's why, like John said, if you limit it to really only certain, and it's exclusionary, cuz you only have. The, the M one is essentially built out. Once you go beyond the maybe hundred plus acres near uh the airport or uh perhaps uh. I don't know, there's really none.
Because it's not.
Unimproved, oh, correct.
I don't think we should lose sight of, of Brett's suggestion about the environmental impacts. Uh, since this is such a widely developing, quickly developing, all kinds of technology. Improvements and all that, we need to kind of keep the handle on that, and I think our council needs to at least have that in our mind.
For sure, and I, I think that's why we're gonna require that with the submission criteria, you know, at, at the base level. And that's why I suggested before, we list the different things that are required to be analyzed, but I think it might be helpful. If at the outset, you know, we say, when you submit this, you, you know, you have to submit the sound study, you have to submit the traffic study, you know, all that stuff. It could be augmented specifically for this use where maybe it wouldn't apply to every other use.
My concern is what happens after this use, because I assume that these data centers are gonna be operational for about twenty years. What do we do with these buildings after that? Uh, maybe we have to work out some sort of escrow agreement with whoever develops it that. Uh, last twenty years and it can be used for studies or for experiments and what these could be used for after. Because otherwise, we're gonna be left with two hundred fifty thousand foot warehouses and the only thing I can think that'd be good for is a. A thousand lane bowling alley, scan what you do with them.
Indoor bike park.
Same problem, same problem.
Same problem we have with malls, but I don't know if there's anything you can do with zoning stem, I don't know.
Maybe residential.
Inside.
Leave your housing, leave your.
Ninety percent, yeah, ninety percent of you will not have any windows, I'm not sure that that's.
It's very good for the health, it's a good place, one people say.
Not for the people that have the middle, anyway, but we're getting off topic.
Can't, now, it's adaptable, yeah, adaptable reuse is great when it's actually practical.
Um, obviously, we want to put in some of these controls or these standards. Um, can we see another version of this with the changes we sort of talked about here? I don't, I don't know if you want to have any more public comment.
I think that, I wanna at least get through what we just talked about and then. Re-review it from there and, and perhaps with the next version, we'll be able to publish some. Uh, at least the start, that way, you know, we can kind of have a record, cuz this is, right now, it's copy and paste, but now this, what we'll be doing. Was more tailored directly to what we've just said. Yeah, that makes sense.
You can come back to weeks or your next meeting and, and you can review something that's a little more. Presentable, so to speak.
No, that, that.
To this discussion.
That would be great, and just so we're saying uh with the new version, you're going to compare it. Basically with the existing one and not this version for that one.
The right side, cool, stay the same.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, okay.
Alright. Well, that's where I think uh I wanna end that unless the board has anything.
Motion to.
Also, Mr. Albert, do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Love and Heim? Question? All in favor?
Alright. Okay.
We've got, uh. Yes, so uh Broadhead Watershed Association didn't get back to us yet on the letter that Julia had sent them. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to table that. Voting by Mr. Love and Heim, do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Albert? Comment?
This, this is the, the letter, right?
Yeah, this is, so we sent them the letter, they just haven't.
It's about us not making donations anymore.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are they making any donations, you rather free?
No, we made, did we pass an ordinance?
Resolution.
A resolution months ago saying that we didn't see ourselves as a, a, just a general donation, a body that just gives out dollars.
I couldn't see that, but they're a pretty noteworthy group.
Correct, well.
And we have to rather agree that goes.
Hold on, so the letter was specific, what that agreement, that resolution says is that if anyone just came in and said, we just want money without a restricted purpose. We were gonna say no, so though they did that, we agree that it's an important group, so we have sent, well, we're going to send a letter?
We did send a letter.
We sent a letter sa- stating, we will give you a thousand dollars if you commit to doing these things that they have done, but it makes it a restricted gift. So we're waiting on response.
Formalizes.
What is the restriction?
Is to do the three things they do every year.
They check that, there's the stream gauge monitoring that they do, they cooperate with us on uh the. Park signage kiosks and park programming, so hikes and things like that. It more or less requires what already was uh a result of our contribution, it just formalizes that. So now there is not one group that will receive money just for the sake of receiving money. We want to prove that there's a tangible benefit to the, the resident intention. Oh, beverage, alright, I. Next, we were talking about discussing uh potential transient business ordinance revisions, I know that there's been a little bit of back and forth. Um, because we.
Michael had some good ideas.
Yeah, cuz we had an initial uh graph based on the discussion, but we wanted to make it perhaps a little clearer.
I don't think, do I have anything?
I don't know if we put it in here because I think what we talked about was so different than the original. Graph, also, just to be clear, the. B W A letters in here, so stream cleanup, which uh they already do. Pike at Medicine Park, which they've also already do, which highlights our uh the signage that we coordinate with B W A to install. Then maintain the stream gauges at Marshall's Falls Park, and that's, that's, those are the three things.
In, in my packet, Mr. President, I don't really care, I have the current version that I wrote. Transient ordinance right after that letter.
This one?
Now, this one, now, this one's over here, it just is not printed correctly.
Maybe I just moved it, but I have the version for, four pager, four sheets.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see.
Two sheets, four takers. With date.
It is before the tapestack on stone invoice. With regard to.
Uh, I'll just motion to table this just because I can't.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't print right. Alright, you wanna go over the, the general sense of what your thought was?
Um. Is everyone already talking about here now?
Down there, question?
So, uh. Presently. Again, I don't have it all, transient businesses are like food trucks and um, and the like. Um, and we have certain requirements, and a lot of times, and I'd asked this a while back. If you're already in an E D zone and you're pulling up a restaurant on wheels, like you can open a restaurant in an E D zone. Without township approval, so I'm just curious about why there are certain, we're approving things that are already allowed in a district. Um, but because it's transient, I, I just.
Right, it, it's like an effective bias against mobile businesses, well, because we're talking about requiring still a permit. To operate here, the same way that another by right use would, except. The current ordinance would have them get a specific permit every time they were anywhere, which is really unrealistic.
This allows you to get like a food truck permit for a season as opposed to.
We also wanted to distinguish between, you know, a, a mobile shop that's like, you know, tent based or like market based rather than. Behaving, you know, with like a food truck.
This adds no hawking as well. Right?
Which exists already.
Already, well, it doesn't show that it already exists, but okay. Alright, I'm gonna motion table cuz I, we can't go through the details. I, I get, I'll, you need a comment first of all.
Motion by Mr. Albert, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second, Robert? Question? We're gonna discuss that length, it, I, maybe not the next meetings, we have two others this, this month, and we have to decide which one to put or not with.
Okay.
The rest we work with, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, okay, new business under the consent agenda, we have the consideration to ratify the repointing of the cabin. Per the twenty twenty four capital improvement budget, consideration for the green light go pay application number four. Consideration to ratify a special event permit for the meat sale which occurred. Consideration to approve the beekeeping form as presented at the last meeting that is now in our packet. The consideration to accept the twenty twenty three audit and the consideration to file for the Green Mountain Drive easements.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Love and Heim.
Oh, second.
Second, Mr. Albert. Just to, uh by way of comment. We'll talk a little bit more about the audit in a second as it relates to sewer authority, but um Bonnie, if you want to just generally describe. Uh, how that went, cuz the rest of this is fairly mundane or already discussed.
The audit issue that we had.
Yeah, well, no, just talk, well, talk about how our audit was fine, but then we'll talk about, uh, after we talk about the. I, I guess you could talk about the other thing now, that way we don't have to talk about it later with regard to the, how it functions with the sewer authority, but go ahead and just give a brief.
Our audit came out there, which is fairly well, that's the bottom line end of it. Um, we have a slight issue with the. Sorry, our audit worked very well, the twenty twenty three audit, we got a fair rating, which is very good. Um, we have one slight issue uh with the sewer authorities' board because. They changed their means of accounting to a modified cash basis, and we're in cruel basis, the township. So there are two different accounting units now, and basically they're included in our audit as a component unit. Um, so they're, they're basically included on exhibit E with their financials. Basically, we can't compare apples and apples somehow, so we have, we're unfortunately gonna be found. Because the modified cash basis is not GAAP compliant, so we weren't aware of this until the audit happened. And so now we're gonna have to have discussions on how we're gonna move forward with this.
Right.
Um, because it's gonna continue to come up as a finding because we're constantly gonna be apples and oranges.
So, I, I got brought into this in a conversation with Mr. Albert and. Um, I'm confused just because the sewer story is a separate entity, it was, we created it. But we don't govern it, we don't.
We do in an aspect from our understanding.
We govern it by, by appointing only.
And we approve their articles of incorporation.
Correct.
But we don't have, but my understanding is we have zero oversight over their financials, so I just don't understand. And my understanding is two different auditors have said opposite things on this. Our auditor says, yes, it's a problem, but another auditor says that shouldn't be a problem, so I just don't.
Correct, and I went back with many townships to find out who's operating this way, and there are other townships that. Have two different means of accounting, um, Mount Pocono and their sewer, but they're the reverse, Mount Pocono operates on a modified cash, but their sewer authority is an equivalent. So there are other townships that do apples and oranges, and their auditors don't seem to have an issue with it. Our auditor that we have contracted has an issue with it, because technically, a modified cash basis is not GAAP compliant. It's Gatsby, but.
Well, I understand it's not GAAP compliant, what I'm just saying is. I'm held accountable to how the sewer authority has their books.
Right.
It's not, it's not our organization.
Because what happens with a modified cash basis is that you don't have to be as detailed with your payables and receivables.
I understand that.
Right.
But it's not, it's not the township, it's a separate entity.
Bankrupt, it is the township, because we have to assume the solar phone, that's the issue. So we have an oversight as to what they're financially doing, that's my.
Well, if that's the case, then shouldn't we be deciding who their auditor is? I mean, all of a sudden, if we're held liable.
I don't know how we did it, if they switched over to a modified cash.
Because we don't oversee their financials. So I, this is, I mean, I, I understand we're in this situation, we have our audit done, I just would love to hear on. If they're, cuz I've heard from another opinion of another auditor saying, no, that's not true.
Their auditor I talked to as well.
Yeah.
And they said that it's not true, that they are compliant, but they were under the, they thought we meant Gatsby. They're not GAAP compliant, which, okay, is that critical, da, 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 I mean, they got a construction loan, was my argument. Their, their financials are strong and they, they got their own bond and they have a construction loan.
It's because we have different.
Correct, so our auditing firm that completed our audit is gonna include this as a finding.
Is there?
That's their opinion, and they went out to other sources that mon- that monitored them as an accounting firm. And that's the direction and the advice that they got, so they're gonna put it in our audit as a finding. And I asked if they can put it out with disclosure, it doesn't have to be a finding, it just has to be disclosed. That they're under a modified cash basis, they're not cruel basis, and they said they could not do that, so.
Is that totally, that's crazy.
No, when is our, when is our deadline? Cuz I will delete that from the consent agenda, I'll ask for an amended motion. Uh, and not sign off on that until we can at least discuss it with them at length, I mean.
Cuz I just, the, the challenge is, I don't know if we have any legal grounds to be able to dictate how they run their financials.
I'm not sure.
And if we don't have a legal ground to do that, then how can we be held accountable to our audits? It just doesn't make any sense.
As I stated that.
But I know, so I'm not yelling at you, I'm just saying it doesn't make sense to me.
I've been around for months now with this, to find out how we can work this out, because I don't want a finding in our audit either, I mean, I'm new to township.
Right.
I don't like having findings or having that, I'll face that for their opinion.
Ron, do you represent any municipalities that have a municipal authority? That have a similar issue by chance or?
The only uh municipality I represent that has its own authority is the borough of Wingat. And I can check with them, I would have no.
Still the M, the Municipalities Authorities Act, so I would, I would be curious to see if they potentially have that, I mean, I just, I don't.
I think Mount Pocono Borough.
Yeah.
Can Bonnie, can Bonnie, can you reach out, can you reach out to PSATs and see what, what their view is on this?
Yes.
May, I doubt they've come, I mean, maybe they've come across it.
Okay, well, I'm sure they will, so can I? Hold on one.
Middle Smithville does have a crew.
Can, can I hear a?
And actually, their sewer authority is, it's not an authority, it's a.
The department.
Department of Township.
Can I hear a motion to amend the original motion, uh deleting item uh V?
How much time do we have to?
The consent.
Alright, okay, I also moved, I'll uh adjust my motion to not include that.
Okay.
Alright.
Wait, you second that, Robert?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, um, how much time do we have to approve that audit?
Um, I filed an extension to our board, our bondholders until December thirty first, cuz they're looking for.
Alright, go ahead.
So I filed an extension up to the end of the year.
I think this is a longer discussion about the sewer authority.
Okay, alright, do I hear any comment on the amended motion?
Well, hold on, let me go through the other things. Um. So I don't know.
To ratify repoint cabin.
That is repointing the cabin, so it is structurally sound to one that's down here, that was in our improvement budget for the year.
This is the third year, yeah, I've done it.
Uh, we did do it. It was already done, it, we, that's why we ratified it.
When did you do it?
I think it was done earlier in the week.
Wait, oh, this is, we're, sorry. We're rat, what are we ratifying? I, I don't know what this point is, I don't, I didn't understand.
We're repointing this. Do you have the cabin that we have that is across the way from the parkhouse?
Yes.
It needed to be repointed, now maybe John.
I don't know.
John, can you give a better explanation about repointing?
Yeah, the, it's, it's log construction, and, no, I haven't examined it closely, but. Just looking at it, looking at the pictures, it's log construction that has uh chinkings uh in between the log and.
Okay.
Various places, it's, it's broken out. Uh, it could be repaired because it helps keep it waterproof, so it's a matter of digging out any loose mortar or chinking. And reestablishing it.
Okay, that is, okay, this is the project that's going, it's gonna happen as an invoice, okay, perfect. Okay, that is, okay, this is the project that's going, it's gonna happen, it's an invoice, okay, perfect. And then the file, I'm sorry, the file, like Green Mountain, easements, that's. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
The gentleman's resume is included in there.
Who are the easements with for Green Mountain?
For people that are immediately adjacent, own property, immediately adjacent to the grid. I think there's three crack in the room.
So we had the appraisal done by wire realty advisors.
Appraisals, sorry, right, sure, right, I was, okay.
Yeah, so that was already done, this now is just so we can file, uh, for the takings.
Is there still any kind of buying or something, what they're gonna do, or just, I think you said just repair?
It's, yeah, it's really gonna look substantially the same, I don't think we have a rendering.
Correct.
So you're, you know, so. The die of the land is three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, but our easement value is two thousand one ninety five, um, okay.
Right, and this one is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Four thousand.
Yeah.
Two thousand and two fifty.
Wow.
Yeah.
More land.
Yeah.
Go ahead, you're, you're good. Alright, that's all my questions.
Any else?
Bonnie, yeah, can I just cut back with you on the twenty twenty three audit?
Hold on, hold on, no, we're not gonna, we'll talk about that in a second, we deleted it from that consent agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
We're not, we're not approving that.
Right, I just, I had a question, I don't know. Something bad.
No, no, I appreciate that, I just wanna make sure we do this as cleanly as we can for the minutes. Alright, all in favor of this motion?
Alright.
Hi. Alright, now.
Do we, can I now motion to table the acceptance of the twenty twenty three township audit?
Yes, I'll entertain that motion. Second.
Okay.
Make sure it's out of the way.
Yeah, question by Mr. Albert, second, Mr. Lavenheim, questions, how are you?
Um, so. It's my impression or my, my opinion that accrual basis would be a more appropriate. Accounting method for the sewer authority than the modified cash. Um, and because it does have stricter record keeping and recording requirements. It would go a long way in speaking to the willingly transparents of. A township authority, which in fact, then, uh.
The question is honestly is whether we have, my question is, I don't know that we have a single jurisdiction based on what I know.
No.
To tell them what to do, that's why I'm like, I don't understand.
I mean, I suppose, now, this is.
You're politicians, you're persuasive.
Sometimes.
Yeah, hopefully.
Make our lives a lot.
Um, but what I would say, I mean, it doesn't have to get to, to this point, but perhaps. One, we consult what their articles of incorporation are. Uh, and see if maybe this is potentially a amendment that we could pursue to those articles ourselves to require. That they share the same accounting method as the, the township, given that they're a compartmental unit of us, let's.
So, I would, I guess I'm just gonna say.
You can do it on friendly level.
If we can't get this changed with the auditor, we have to do something so that we don't have it happen again next year.
Correct.
Yeah.
When we actually have to, our auditor will state you have to do something next year to address it, so.
So basically.
I think we'll, we have to just. Yeah, and even if, even if, even if they say, fine, you don't have to, we probably should pursue something, but I'd like to see what the finding is first before we. We're moving forward.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, cash, modified cash basis is a lot easier than using a cabinet.
I understand why they do it.
So, you know, I see that too, but I, I'm trying to stop because I have to order financing.
Right.
Let's postpone this for a special meeting, the executives there. You've got one more copy, is it on the budget for, on the audit?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I was just, I mean, I agree that accrual, I think they both ought to be on accrual, but, but also. Can't you have a finding from one year to the next if it's a, if it's kind of a minor thing that, I mean.
You can't.
You prefer it to be a hundred percent clean, but.
Right, right, but you.
I don't like findings.
Oh, yeah, it, it doesn't.
It's not gonna kill us to have a finding.
Here is just, the weird reality, if you have a finding that highlights material misrepresentation. Then you're gonna have a problem getting a grant, but otherwise, this is really just technocratic funding.
It is.
Alright.
Alright, all in favor of the motion table?
Alright.
Okay, so now we are going to have a discussion presentation for twenty twenty five budget. Does anybody need a break before we do something? Alright, can we recess for five minutes before we turn back?
Sure.
Want to mute that?
What else we have?
No, Jacob's doing speaking. What did he say? No?
We're gonna share.
Should we share? Alright, you start.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, are we back on, Diana?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, cool. So just a couple of ground rules. Our budgeting this year was done differently than previously. We had our professionals, which are Julia and Bonnie, who's our finance director, prepare a draft budget based upon all of the what was baked in, uh, based on, you know, rising energy costs, healthcare, that type of stuff. The stuff that we have very little discretion over, refuse bills, um, our current vendors. And then from that point on, uh, Bonnie had solicited opinions from the supervisors and the department heads of which, uh, solicited our thoughts on what should be or what should not be included. And from that point, not everyone took advantage of that. So we based that upon existing numbers, but we used fairly conservative estimates. So we're going to have Bonnie go through the bulk of the presentation with us. And then afterwards, we will entertain questions on that. I wanna keep it as seamless as we can, um, procedurally, Diana, if you wanna go to the next slide.
Can I just ask you to clarify one thing you said? There's about when you said there were not everyone took advantage of that, I'm not.
Not, not every, not every person said, I have this specific need for the budget.
Got it. You gave the opportunity and some people didn't.
So like, for example, I, I felt that most of what I wanted in the budget was already baked in. You know, it was keeping the essentials, but, but when.
And I, I didn't ask for any specific things, but I asked for a zero increase budget.
Correct, as the three of us did on that.
And is it zero increase?
Correct.
I mean, yes, I've seen, I've seen the draft.
Correct.
Can you tell us where you ended up the year?
Uh, the year's not over yet, so no.
Well, you pretty much give us an idea if you remember.
I could not. I would have to wait for, I mean, those final expenses, could not everything people. Anyway, we're gonna answer questions afterwards. So the key achievements from the 2024 budget were the stabilization of fire EMS services, where we provided over $500,000 in funding to our local fire EMS departments, which sorely needed that money. Um, they can talk to you about what they've utilized the funds for, uh, on their own. But we know that it purchased, uh, finance the purchase of new fire trucks, new ambulances, and, uh, significant administrative support, um, for our, our departments. The increased administrative support, uh, in our internal staff increased, uh, resulted in fourteen enforcement notices. And there's roughly sixty-one active investigations, I guess, within the zoning office, and thirty-one of those have been resolved. We're working on the rest, but I wanted to highlight the enforcement notices because that's more than has been sent out here in a while. We also brought paving in-house, which paves three and a half miles. And believe it or not, that is a significant amount when you consider we've got fifty-four miles. We got fifty-four miles of roads and we're on roughly a ten-year replacement plan for those assets.
Quick question, Jacob?
Hold on, I really, I'm gonna get through the presentation and then.
Are you trying to clarify the numbers on zoning? There was something I thought you contradicted yourself. You said there were sixty-one active and.
Sorry, there were six, there were sixty-one, uh, complaints, formal complaints, of which thirty-one, uh, were resolved.
So there's thirty still active?
Thirty-five, yes.
Okay, got it.
And included in that fourteen resulted in enforcement notices because often cases before we get to an enforcement notice, there is compliance.
Right.
Um, okay, so the budget was developed by the staff for board approval. Balanced budget is required by Pennsylvania law and must be adopted by December thirty-first. And the requirement is, um, that it has to be advertised for twenty days for public inspection. So the process is to get the presentation today. We will make discretionary determinations between today and next week, when we will have the, uh, the line item budget, uh, for consideration. And then we will adopt the final budget on December seventeenth. And then, uh, the millage resolution, uh, it's not supposed to be December seventeen, twenty twenty-five, but that'll be at our regular meeting on January sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Go back one, um. If there are mi- minor changes, if there are minor changes on December seventeenth, we can make them so long as it's not more than a certain percent.
More than, not more than twenty-five percent.
Okay, so we don't have to re-advertise if we reduce the line by a thousand dollars?
If you accidentally added a zero to trash collection, no, you don't need to.
Okay.
Re-advertise for that, for example. But if you do add twenty-six percent to capital improvements, yes, you do.
Okay.
So our assessment trends are relatively decent, so we'll go to that slide. Um, you can see the assessment is hundred million, so we've generally been able to maintain where we're at. We do not yet have the twenty twenty-five numbers, but you can see where one mil generated roughly, you know, one percent of what that is. So, for example, uh, this year, one mil would generate six hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-four cents at a hundred percent collection. We anticipate more like ninety-two, ninety-three percent. So I will let, uh, Bonnie take it from here to talk about the millage. And we'll add in as necessary, but as promised, there is no change in the military.
No change in the military. So then we're gonna go to the summarization of the twenty twenty-five budget. Again, it was decided that we were gonna prepare the budget presentation with me now for tonight, and then we're going to detail into the line item budget at the next meeting. Um, you'll see that the budget overall with all the funds, our budget is gonna be four point seven point, uh, eight-eight million dollars. General fund's gonna be three point zero four seven. State liquid fuels is three hundred and twenty-three K. Capital improvement is gonna be eight hundred ninety-five K. Fire tax fund is three hundred and forty-four, and EMS tax is one eighty-seven five. Um, we've gone through, I don't know if you have any questions on each one's.
Go back, go back for one minute.
Okay.
All right. I booked it, sorry, but. I, I did have one, cause I wasn't quite sure how, so the capital improvement grants fund, as an example, I obviously understand that as a revenue source. Is the reason you have it also in, um, expenditures is that's cause ninety-five, three-three-one is restricted to that? Is that why it's there like that, or?
What do you mean in the capital?
So.
What number?
General government expenses.
So you have some expenditures, some, sorry, some revenue streams that are restricted revenues, right? I, it just isn't, I was just an example, but the reason why those, those restrictions carry forward below is because there were, so for example, state fund liquid fuels is restricted to all the works department expenses, cause you gotta use it for that, I understand that.
Correct.
So are we saying that all the capital improvements, so the grants we wrote, ninety-five thousand of them was restricted to those general gun expenses? Just wanna make sure that I understood what I was, okay, perfect.
And you'll see that in the next couple of slides, they break it out.
Yep.
Is there detail available?
Wait, after, we're still gonna do next, next.
Sorry.
Okay, so I'm gonna break down where we got here, expenses, I don't have much detail here. We're gonna break down, basically, I digraph, I grouped together the revenue sources that are on the summary sheet on the top of the revenue se- section, and did just a graph to show you where the trends are going. Same, next slide is for the expenditures, same will apply. And I showed you what the, the numbers were and what the percentages of the total expenditure, what that percentage holds.
Highlight quickly on the revenue sources, back one slide, Diana. I just wanna emphasize that folks often think that we get subsidized by the state. That is a very, very small portion of the funds that we get. So, um, we get that for liquid fuels, uh, which is that roughly three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. The miscellaneous, that's the other intergovernmental revenue, is three hundred and thirty-one K. So a substantial portion of that is the liquid fuels and the rest are what we're able to net on some of the other things, like township cleanup. So you can see that it's pretty clearly funded by the real estate tax, but also their income taxes. So those are the biggest two, which are together, you know, over seventy-one percent of what we get. You know, everything else fluctuates, uh, much more, uh, especially on, on the side of like the intergovernmental revenue.
Where's the blue roof one fall?
Frank Chatsworth.
On your Frank Chatsworth.
Mm-hmm. Hold on, we're gonna, we're gonna clarify, we're gonna answer questions after. Yeah.
Next one? What is that, the expenditures?
Yeah.
Same kind of graph. Then we get to the liquid fuels. It basically is gonna show you the, basically, our income and revenue from liquid fuels is the state fund that we get for the liquid fuels for tents, which this year it's gonna be two hundred and eighty-one, uh, thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And then we also get some revenue on callbacks, which are those that we maintain for the state. So that's an additional sixty-five hundred. So our revenue for liquid fuels is looking at three hundred and twenty-three fourth third. The expenditures, again, pretty much, we're gonna spend all of that money, um.
You go back one, Diana? Sorry, I thought you were counting these expenditures.
No, this is general sum. Moving on to the, yeah, that's, that's okay. Um, basically, it's all gonna be on paving as expenditures. You'll see on this spreadsheet, it's as public works department expense, the three hundred and twenty-three thousand. We spent, the majority of the money is spent on paving the roads. We did a little bit on, uh, the oil for chip sales, but most of it was been paving, um, cause there's quite a lot of work left to be done in that area.
Okay. Can we go back to, go back one, that's.
Just wanna highlight this quick.
That was a good, that's good. Just stay here for two minutes.
Mm-hmm. This is just general fund?
Yeah, I know, but this is your, uh, so this is not the budget of the expenditures, this is just general fund expenditures.
Correct.
Right, so you don't.
For the general fund budget.
So no capitals in here?
No, we get to that in a bit.
No.
If you notice on the summary sheet, it was five different columns for each one of the funds. So this is the breakdown of the general fund revenue and expenses, expenditures. So now, if we go to the next slide, we're gonna go into liquid fuels. Basically, the liquid fuels was in and out, like we get the, the state liquid fuels tax, and then we spend it on the paving maybe.
And that's why we supplement, as you saw in the previous slide, under expenditures, what you do on top of, uh, your liquid fuels comes out of your general fund. And for.
Correct.
Pen dots auditing say, they do not want you to mix those funds.
Right.
So when liquid fuels runs out, which it does, because it costs roughly a quarter million dollars to pave a mile, then you start using your own fund.
Jake, do you recall on liquid fuels, what has been the last few years, it seems like it's gone down?
They say it's going down like three percent years, something like that. Maybe more than that?
It's roughly similar. I don't remember a time where we got more than like three hundred and thirty thousand. I mean, because the, the gas taxes has remained the same.
With your turnbacks.
Right.
This is three hundred each, but the last nine is on the.
I have, at P S A's, they did a, the pen docked a presentation.
Yeah.
Like, that number's gonna continue to go down, and, and because there's more electric cars, cars are becoming way more efficient, so ultimately, in general, the people buying less gas.
If I'm not mistaken, they did indeed, or they are about to adopt it, you know, some sort of fee for electric vehicles.
At some point, they're gonna have to offset it, otherwise, we're gonna run out of ability to pave roads.
Right.
Just curious, I, I know this never happened, cause it's insufficient already, but if you do not spend all your liquid fuels funds in a particular year, does that carry forward for the next year?
It does. And actually, what happens with that is there's also, within a liquid fuels fund, there's a, a major equipment expense fund.
Okay.
So you're allowed.
Or you can set it aside.
Twenty percent of what you get allocated from liquid fuels, you're allowed to put twenty percent of that money into a major equipment expense fund.
Are you, are you allowed to get interest on that, those funds?
Yes, and you can.
And then you have to use that interest fund towards that purchase.
Yes, exactly, absolutely. But the trick is, is that you have to keep a balance in your liquid fund at the end of the year, your cash balance. So whatever your cash balance is at the end of the year, that's what monitors what your major equipment expense balance is gonna be. Because you can't say, oh, I only have ten thousand dollars left in my cash fund in the bank account, but I still have forty thousand dollars in my major equipment. How could you pay for something if you only have time? Makes sense? So that number, you just can't keep banking it. It fluctuates what your cash balance is on the end of the year. It's kinda tricky to manage better than where you need to spend the money on with the roads, or you wanna put it towards a piece of equipment. Bye?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Keep going.
And then this year, as we, as, as Chairman Pride explained, that we did all the in-house paving, um, within the township. Previous years, they outsourced it all. So this year, it's much more cost effective.
Wait, wait, we didn't outsource it all. We outsourced the, the major contract they paved. So typically, a mile and a half, a mile and a quarter.
Correct, correct. Um, this year, we did not. So, and we plan on doing the same thing next year, as we're gonna continue with the building. They also put on the, the liquid fuels that the roads that they're planning on paving this year, so that was in there. Then we're gonna flip over to the fire and EMS tax. Um, this is what we project for the, uh, twenty twenty-five EMS and the twenty twenty-five fire tax. Again, this is based on the twenty twenty-four certified tax assessment dollars, cause the twenty twenty-fives have not come out. They don't come out until the end of November.
Hmm.
Um, and it's also based on the distribution percentages that were adopted by the township in twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Okay.
We will similarly have to adopt resolutions the same time, uh, that we adopt the military.
Again, it's a time issue because we have to present the budget and a lot of concern.
They'll give us then come December third, basically, December first.
Yeah, exactly. Um, the military is not gonna change with fire. Tax, military is not gonna change with EMS tax, and why you're going to have a budget is enough. So these are the expenditures, draft capital expenditures, that we were given as to what we are planned budget, the projects in twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Okay, I can flip the page.
I know, yeah, right.
Yeah, just briefly.
Are they ones in the dump truck?
Right.
House of vehicles.
Cause those are, at the rate that the, the older equipment is aging, we definitely, uh, need those. Unfortunately, some of this is covered too by the, the sale of existing, uh, equipment that we have that we no longer need or.
If we, if we're able to secure, this, does this include restricted grant revenue? Or it's not? It's discretionary, uh?
This one is not, correct.
So what happens if we get a grant to cover some of these expenses?
You'll see the next page.
Okay.
The next page shows all the grant income versus the expenses.
Okay.
Okay, so we're looking at receiving an income. Well, the expenses are gonna be about six hundred and sixty-eight thousand in capital project expenditures. And we're, we're anticipating that we're awarded grants already, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We'll pay for six hundred and eighty thousand of those expenses.
So that's more than enough?
Correct.
So.
But that's just, this is, these are just the grants. So we net out on the grants, but we still need to allocate, as you proposed, the two hundred and fourteen or so.
Correct.
So, but, so then my, my.
Transfer funds from.
Right, so my question remains though, cause I saw, I think there's, um, cameras on one of those, I assume that's for, for one of the parks.
Security.
Right, if we were able to secure a grant for that, then that number would just go up here and we'd have to spend less on the general fund.
Correct.
Okay.
And then we could.
I think the concept is that we, we decided that we'd like to, um, allocate these two hundred thousand a year from.
Right.
General fund if we can.
Right.
Um, and move it over to capital expenditures, so that's why we put that.
Yeah, it's there as, as in case, but obviously, if we have, can secure that funding and.
It's kinda like your need business.
Saves. Gives us, gives us on the ten-year cycle.
Correct.
Because when I got here, there was, there was a limited special projects fund, but there was not a capital improvements fund to replace our assets that are now all listed on our audit.
Our capital improvement fund is effectively two hundred thousand of three million, or, right? That general fund and the general fund. It's like eight percent, what is that?
Three point four million.
What did you say?
Three point oh four seven million is a general fund, related to eighty-seven thousand.
Oh, okay, so eighty-seven, so. Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any questions on that?
I do.
Hold on, I wanna, I wanna take questions at the end of the presentation, that way.
Almost there, got two more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
They've served the, the projects that we have planned. And then, uh, these are the tax rates for twenty twenty-five, there's gonna be no change in any of the millage.
It just shows what it amounts to, the same as last.
Okay.
Right.
And that's the end.
And we can add payments from there.
New slide back, our wealth free now. Um, on the, uh, grant. Yeah, the grant expenditures.
Correct.
So the, the note there says that it's only awarded grants, and that grants that are applied for, awarded and completed within the same year, as well as grants that the township has applied for or plans to apply for, but not yet been awarded, are not demonstrated here.
Correct.
So on the grants that are applied for, awarded and completed. Am I understanding that correctly?
You'll see the note side, see on the third column, it says notes, it says expected to be completed.
Right.
But, cause some of this grant revenue, I believe, from what Julie explained to me, has been moved from the previous year.
Yeah.
You get great.
So a lot of restricted revenue crosses years.
Right.
So since it's accrual, you have, you've already booked it as revenue.
Correct.
So it's not, not gonna show as additional revenue, but you have.
But you haven't necessarily.
Received.
Or, or booked the expenditure that matches the revenue.
That's correct. This is proposed.
You have, you have the ability, I mean, once you, like a lot of our grants, we get the money after we've spent it.
Correct.
Right, 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 right. So grants that are are awarded and completed within the same year, if there are, so that's telling me that those aren't on that on the twenty twenty-five, because it's twenty twenty-five.
Correct, you're sorry that twenty twenty-five, that.
I'm being thick.
They are.
I am. Being thick. No.
They are in the twenty twenty-five budget phase, that's what the budget is gonna be six.
Got it.
This is showing out of the eight eighty-six. Six hundred and sixty-eight of it, we're gonna get six seventy-seven back in grant revenue.
Right.
Makes sense?
Yes, okay, thank you.
The two eighteen is not, but that's, that is offset by the two thirteen that we're bringing over from the general fund.
From the general fund, okay.
Also, I think, Bonnie, just, not that it specifically deals with the, the grants or the capital, it's just general note, we did shop our interest rates and we moved, uh, significant funds to get much better interest than where we were at previous banking institution.
We did, we went from a one point eight two eight straight to a five point two five interest rate.
Oh, girl.
Can I say?
She's good.
That's gonna bring in space.
Got you.
Talk after.
Yeah, Vermont, so, they said spread the word, yeah. I could have looked on the website beforehand, but is this on the website? Cause I really can't read.
No, that, that, this, 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 this will be.
It will be?
Yeah.
And will the, will the detailed budget be up before the meeting where it's discussed, so we can?
So long as we are generally good with what we have on here, yes.
Okay.
Um, and then we will formally vote on, uh, what day did I say, the nineteenth, which is our meeting next week, uh, we will, and then that will all be out there. And then on the seventeenth is when we would vote on adopting the budget.
Diana, can you go back to this one, just?
Revenue sources.
I was gonna say, the page, uh, I don't know, it's really, really long. Cause that is fairly, I mean, it honestly is fairly detailed, there's. Keep going.
The actual budget summary?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's your categories.
Next one.
Oh.
There you go.
There. You can just leave it up there, cause she can come up after and take a look. There will be, um, a little bit more detail, but I mean, we're not gonna get more detail than three hundred dollars for health and the services.
Right.
There's cleaner recycling doesn't get in more detail, there's a few of those things that grow out, but not everything.
Right, very timeless.
Do you know about how much you save by bringing the paving in-house? I mean, that does seem like it was a good idea.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I'd have, we'd have to ask Chris to compare.
He hasn't given me his final numbers yet, so.
It is less of savings and more that, uh, contractors have to pave more.
Correct.
Correct, exactly.
Because we were spending, so when, when I started here in twenty twenty, I think our contract bid really got pushed until twenty twenty-one because of the pandemic, cause in the prime construction season, people weren't really doing that. But you would figure, you spend roughly a hundred and eighty thousand of our allocation on the contract paid. And now, essentially, almost all of your liquid fuels allocation, forgetting about the, uh, the turnback mileage, you are spending a whole thing on roughly a mile. So figure a quarter million for a mile. So do three point, uh, three and a half miles is pretty significant, and it's much more efficient because we're literally, it, it's not just our crew doing it alone. This is a relationship that benefits both us and Middle Smithfield, who we share, uh, equipment and, and personnel with when we do that.
Bonnie, you've got the average tax bill here with, uh, school tax of five thousand four thirty-three. Um, I assume you're not factoring in the effects of, uh, the state legislature revising the old harmless rule. Which I think, um, even by, you know, a conservative measure should reduce our school taxes by about twenty percent, you know, even about.
We don't have that, that's not in the slide show.
Jake would probably never worry about.
Yeah, I was playing while I still virtually commented about.
Where are you going?
Just, 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 well, you put it in the next, uh, thing in the packet that, that we have for us. The, the, the long story, just, I assume we'll probably answer a couple more budget questions. But real quick, I just, I will mention, what Robert said is true. Legislature allocated a significant portion of funds, uh, to all the school districts and the Commonwealth based on tax adequacy supplements and then, uh, ready-to-learn supplements. That funding will result in, uh, a reduction each year that legislature funds that. So because we were roughly getting twenty to twenty-five percent of our school district budgets funded by the Commonwealth when it should be roughly fifty, we were kinda getting nailed with that. We literally have the highest school taxes in the country. So because of that, because that was based upon census data from the nineteen nineties, which then said, you cannot receive less funding than the year before. We have a lot of school districts in the West and other less populated areas that are getting funded at sixty and seventy percent. So in order to achieve equity, there's a one point one billion dollar cash infusion this year, and then it should be over the next six budgets, um, that will reduce the local burden. And that funding is restricted, so the districts have to use it for, uh, their debt relief. They have to use it for, um, avoiding tax increases and also mitigating old harmless. So when they adopt it.
So it doesn't guarantee they're gonna reduce taxes.
It doesn't guarantee it necessarily, but, but eventually, it, it likely will. I know that the school districts here have talked about issuing rebates, uh, based upon that, but also.
Just get a fixed move forward.
You will have, well, correct, and it is now, so the new formula is good. But this, this will help achieve equity like twenty years faster than the changed formula itself. So I'll take my, my state hat off in a second, but that is probably the, the best achievement of the legislatures I had over the last few years, because otherwise, um, you know, it's been hard to get stuff agreed upon. um yeah, it's been hard to get stuff agreed upon. I mean, this has been, this is the result of litigation by uh this has been the result of litigation that has taken all, I wanna say almost a decade to reach its conclusion at the Commonwealth Court, which said that the funding formula was unconstitutional. So that said, hopefully that that school tax bill goes down, the average except the average home is assessed at a hundred seventy five thousand dollars to the county assessment office. So, you know, whatever you pay will be different based on what your assessment is, but the average is a hundred seventy five thousand.
Is that the county or Smithfield Township?
Smithfields. So they provide that from uh their data, because they have thousands of, you know, they bring us data and so then every year they have to tell us how different is e- essentially what the common level ratio is for the value of your home to what your assessment is. So they release that from the state tax legalization board.
This will be uh debated or decided either in January or the December or the January meeting of the school board. So it might be important to attend one of those meetings every week.
Let's say realistically, the state budget this year, because they they adopted the state budget after the school districts had adopted theirs, because the state has a June thirtieth deadline, which they often miss. The school districts cannot miss that deadline, otherwise they're not gonna get their allocation on time. So there there's legislation that's trying to tie the dates together now, that way if the legislature doesn't pass a budget, the districts aren't required to guess what they're going to get from the state. Um but what I can say is certainly, I I I don't know enough to to say what whether what Robert just said is exactly what's gonna happen in every district. But certainly this coming June, when the state adopts its twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget, you will see a second cash infusion and then they essentially will have the funds from this one that came this year along with that one, so then you'll then they'll make a determination what they'll do. Anyway, Smithfield. Go ahead.
I have several questions, but please be patient. What's the administrative secretary and administrative coordinator? That you have salaries listed for?
What are the positions?
Well, who are they?
Diana is the administrative coordinator.
Who's the administrative secretary?
There is no administrator secretary.
We've got thirty three thousand dollars in there.
Uh.
That's always a pay off fire.
For this year. We're not gonna discuss personnel matters.
I want to know what thirty three thousand dollars is for, that was thirty thousand.
I don't see where it's referenced.
Where is the thirty three thousand?
Sorry, wait, 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 yeah, what are you what are you talking about? Where are you referencing it?
Through it, it's right there, actually right together, one of the other, right? I can't see that from here, but it's there.
Oh, I mean, we didn't read it off of the screen.
I don't see the general fund.
No.
You're not the administrative coordinator, you'll see the administrative secretary right there.
Are are you talking about the existing?
So twenty twenty four budget?
Twenty twenty four budget. You're looking at twenty twenty four budget, I think.
That was just twenty twenty five we got, didn't we? No?
No.
No, because we haven't released that, that's coming out.
After this.
After this.
Yep.
Now, I have another question. How about Robert's little whatever he's done? Is that paid for by a grant or isn't it?
That question is pretty ambiguous, I don't know what you're referencing.
Thousand dollars of artwork, is that covered by a grant or not?
Yes, it is covered by a grant.
Now I have another concern.
That's part of those restricted funds that haven't been all been spent.
It's come to our my attention that Robert has been using his position to get work done up in Shawnee Valley. We even have Ron as part of it, we're paying, Ron, we're paying for his hours. And we have nothing to do with an HOA.
Yeah, it's a two.
The other thing, I I do hope you're not gonna be playing, I know you wanna play with the uh liquid fuel tax trying to get money for them, and I don't it's not right.
Okay.
Well, I think you need to look into it because it's it's still basically.
Okay, I'm not gonna entertain that.
Well, if you're the chairman, you need to look into this.
We do look at, we we do, we do look into these things and we make sure that we're on board and we make sure in concert with our solicitor that our practices are kosher.
Well, I can tell you that.
Okay, thank you, next. Okay, Jamie.
That came up at a previous meeting several months ago. What you were just talking about that Robert brought up. And it really made a lot of sense at that time, and I don't remember all the details, but if you had been at the meeting, you would know why the whole thing went up. And what was the reasoning behind it?
Because he didn't like his little speed bumps, so he wanted, one time he wanted to put them on Riverway.
Well, there was there was there there was a good reason and.
Maybe I need to go give him minutes.
But Jamie, we have no authority whatsoever in an HOA.
Well, there, like I said.
If you start with one, we're gonna have to do it with all.
Well, just just go back and look for minutes.
Pam, every road, every road the township is considered a public road by PENDOT. If there are dangerous uh conditions, we have the right to examine them.
Robert, you goofed one of our pretty little shit together.
All right, okay, all right. Anybody else? Go go ahead, Tara.
This is a budget related question.
Sure.
I just would like to confirm, I believe I read it on the slide, but I just wanted to confirm, so overall, there is no increase in the taxes for the township.
Correct.
To residents reflected in what this budget.
Correct, correct, everything is the exact, uh the mileage rates are the exact same as those last year or this this year.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
Yep.
Because I know last year, um like my taxes are escrowed with my mortgage and I know at the end of the year I got a letter saying, you know, enough is not escrowed. So I just wanted to know.
Whether or not your bank changes it, they may or may not, you may just get more in your escrow, but you can ask your bank, say, does not look like our taxes will change, so don't increase it again.
Correct, and we'll make that official by resolution uh in January.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
First, you go ahead.
I have a question about the twenty twenty three audit and just whether or not that's available for review.
Once we approve it.
Yeah, once we approve it.
Which we just tabled because I wanna.
Hoping that, yeah, hoping we can resolve that.
But for sure by December thirty first.
Before that.
Before September.
Yep, after.
That will be there.
Well, Bonnie, thank you very much for that, so we will be considering the line item format of this at our November nineteenth meeting. Uh the next.
Sad. Oh, and then adopted the mark, I'm like, I forgot, I forgot.
Correct, and then um we discussed item C, so that is now moot because we discussed it under the consent agenda. The last item is a consideration uh for a letter of support for Pokemount Industries PENDOT multimodal fund application regarding Smithfield Gateway. Because of my employment with the House of Representatives, I will refuse myself on this matter, but I will entertain a motion or facilitate.
This is the actual letter in here? Yes, it's right there, right. This is a multimodal grant, right, so those are grants used to fund public works improvements and this is from Gateway Project to try to fund um two oh nine and four forty seven.
And what specifically is the grant gonna cover?
Upgrades to two oh nine, four forty seven, phase two.
The roads.
The roads.
Yeah.
Translate that, but if that means.
Just to be clear, the the first phase is is what is essentially done now.
Right.
PENDOT, uh not PENDOT, but through uh the governor's office. Um but the states, was the state might else say they Gateway got three hundred thousand dollars that I referenced, I think at the last meeting for four forty seven. So this this funding here is primarily completion of the other phase on two oh nine, which are not just the surfacing, but there are other improvements there too.
You're not gonna give the money, are you?
We're not giving the money, this is a letter of support for a grant that Petrus is submitting to the state.
Pokemount Mountains Industries, just just to be clear, Pokemount Industries are the folks that actually hold the money.
Yeah, it's not in.
Then I'll retrieve the work done.
Pokemount Industries is the recipient.
Chuck, Chuck Leonard.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Levinheim, second.
So I should go there before we talk, not while.
That is more than okay. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And let the director have that you refuse yourself.
Yep. General public comment.
This is a general public comment, Mr. Chair, but there's a contempt hearing on the mountain manor matter next Tuesday.
Right.
Uh I need a flash drive or a thumb drive and I need a uh computer or something in order to play it, because I don't have any of those.
Okay, well, I think, I know that Julia copied the flash, I thought she had provided it to you at the last. I'll we'll double check, but we do, we have all of that.
Okay, and and a machine to play on, because again, I don't have.
Right, okay.
And I'll need it for probably by the end of the week, because she will say.
Okay.
I don't know if you heard that part, Ron.
Which part? What is the last thing you said, Ron?
He needs it by the end of the week.
I need it by the end of the week for the hearing.
Hundred percent.
Do we have a forest fire emergency contingency plan? Nine one one.
Um that is part of, so the township has an emergency management plan. And it coordinates with Monroe County's emergency management plan.
And what can I go for up up to the minute? Fire updates?
Um so the Monroe County Emergency Center maintains uh, you know, their their proprietary way of monitoring those situations. What we use is uh DCNR. They have a map, a a mapping system based upon the fire and then they get active updates basically on the hour from uh the Office of Emergency Management, the director is Mary Ellen Peegan. So they run out of uh Snyder'sville. And they're usually the point on the ground uh when it comes to coordination, because they're these are generally regional issues and not just exclusive to the township. But our coordinator basically will coordinate between our public works and then the fire companies are necessary and then the county one will work with DCNR, because they have their own forest fire crew. Uh helicopter and whatnot, so they coordinate with us and then.
Emergency banner on our website?
It's building shit on our fire stands.
We do have a burning ban, it's a permanent burning ban.
All on our accounts.
Yep, it is a permanent burning ban in Smithfield, so there's no no open burning of of any kind that's permitted.
Is there a banner on the website for like, there's a fire on Boarders Knob?
I mean, I guess theoretically could be, um I think though, in in that case, like we coordinate, uh I mean, we we post updates as soon as we get them like on on the Facebook and stuff. But also when there's something going on that's that emergent in like a particular area, there's folks that are on the ground, knock on doors and say, hey, you gotta get out. And that's usually um the burden rests with the fire company on that and then our crew stands ready to insist and we need to literally move people or things, um so we're always ready for that.
And finally, the no man's land, those can't be driven two oh nine, PENDOT says, I'll talk to township, township says it's not our deal. Is there anything in works, you know, mitigating the accidents on?
What was the, I think we just listed that on on our emergency plan update for the county through hazard mitigation. So we are working on that at this moment, because we we recognize the the need there and certainly uh as road improvements will continue in that corridor, we wanna prevent that and then we're also awaiting, I don't know, was there another, did they have a final submission for the uh, yeah, so hopefully when there's a final submission as well with that proposed land development by with the dilapidated pizza place, we'll be able to work with it then as well, but we're already working with emergency management to deal with these.
Sure, thank you.
Hopefully we'll have something a little more concrete, but like I said, the best thing will be the physical change to the infrastructure more than any signage.
No, you have time, definitely.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anybody? Hi, Jamie.
Uh, do you have any updates on the flatlands of the the person that was throwing in the one lane?
The conservation district was there since the last uh meeting. We've spoken with them and are actively coordinating with them, we believe the gentleman is pursuing compliance measures at the moment. Um.
But he was, I mean, the gentleman I saw, he was cited.
Oh, yeah, no, they they said, hey, you have to get this in line and and all of that, that he didn't have best management practices in place or in E and S plan or anything that he really needed, but we don't believe this was willful, at least at this moment, but as soon as we hear anything else from the conservation district, we will let you know.
On the form that I read, his statement was that he was planning on going in so he could plant grass and mow it. Still, he's not allowed to do it anyway.
My my concern is that when he was filling it, the a Jason Park company that buns in with his parcel, their basement got flooded, so like the water table has shipped it over to a certain house.
Right, and that's why the conservation district is saying you need to have clean fill, not dirty fill for that reason, and also you need to get approval before you do things like that. But I I I think that we're gonna to compliance here.
I'm thinking, you know, we hear the machines still going active, so I'm not sure if he's removing or is he continuing to build?
Our belief is that he would be removing. So, but the conservation district does random inspections to check on that, so.
Maybe.
As soon as this, the second that they do it in 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 investigation or a visit, they send us a copy of the same report that they give to the individual.
Maybe they should visit the person that has an issue with their house now, since the water has shifted to that house.
Potentially. Um.
That's something that maybe the township should look into.
Well.
I know she had come called and complained, but no one's helping her.
Well, she has a potentially, I mean, this is, we're we're speculating, but if someone has a case where they they can prove that someone willfully or negligently impacted uh their property with with stormwater issues, then you have a case under the Stormwater Management Act and you pursue private judicial relief for that. We've dealt with that once. Didn't work out so good for that person that filed it. It's very difficult to.
She called DCNR, right, was it John Mox that?
The conservation district, I mean, certainly they.
Called John Mox, I called her to her house, he's, he does when.
He came last time.
He already, he already inspected it.
He's been there, he cited.
But the house, I mean, well, he'll, he might go look at the neighbor's house if she says this started after.
She should reach out to her and a lot of people, but no one's helping her at all.
She should call him, probably John Mox and tell her first.
She has a John Mox.
She has.
John Mox?
Yeah, she's still with them.
With him or them?
I don't know, that's what I mean, he needs to.
And is there any other?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Levinheim, a second.
Wait, I did have a comment, sorry.
Your last chance.
Um, not to beat a dead horse, but I really would like to go back to my question to John Early, when he was getting his engineer's report. And if that's part of his engineering report about specifically the healthy minds issue. Um, I think that we should be prepared to be where you're at with it.
Right.
Instead of, I don't remember.
Okay.
The purpose of my engineering report is I am is to advise the board and the public as to what we have been working on during the past couple of weeks. I don't remember the specifics of any of the five projects that I know that are coming up before the planning commission on Thursday. By Thursday, well, I have probably looked in the last ten weeks at, or last two weeks, at about ten different projects. Uh and I don't recall the specifics. With respect to healthy minds, what I do recall is a a fairly simple sketch by I questioned in our letter how a building got built without a building permit from the township or a land development. And that's one question that has to be answered by somebody.
A building got out of square.
On on healthy minds. Right. Uh I don't know that they ever got land development approval, which I believe they should have had, but that is a comment. Uh the other comment that I have in that letter is that I applied for the use as an accessory use. I asked as an accessory to what? They said, and I believe it was an in, we said we didn't know.
You're you're referring to the water gap wellness.
Yes, that's what I thought you were referring to.
Healthy lines, which again, everybody confuses the.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because I was thinking about the the most recent, I don't believe we have a healthy mind yet, sorry.
There on the planning commission, there is a a sketch plan.
Oh, then then I completely.
On the planning commission.
Okay, then I'm I'm drawing a blank.
If if it's not, I mean, I don't recall seeing it yet, but generally.
I thought I just saw the water gap.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, there's a, there's a uh.
If if there is.
I don't have it with me.
It may be on there, it could be bad, because we don't have any new information.
I'm gonna say if they didn't submit new information, I can't recall honestly if it was submitted previously or.
It's on, it's on the website.
There's a, there's a webpage, Mr. Chair.
Their conversation and their sketch plan are on the website.
There is, the the township asked me to put together a website.
Right, right, but just just to be clear, so what I'm saying is, the reason maybe John doesn't have, you know, the the answer that the folks want yet necessarily is because under new business, it's on accepting it for review. That means there hasn't been a review generated, therefore he hasn't.
Right, and so my, so my question to him earlier was, has, was that specific project something he had been working on last month? So I was referring to healthy minds, healthy minds.
Yeah, I was thinking referring to the, with with respect to healthy minds, those uh Jacob just pointed out, I believe that's only up for acceptance, we haven't even done the review, we're just recommending it go that the process starts.
With the, for healthy minds or for water gap wellness?
Healthy mind, healthy mind.
It looks like Healthy Minds submitted a sketch plan, they put together an escrow, so there there'll probably be a forthcoming review of that sketch plan, I'd imagine.
It's on the, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda for acceptance. That, all that means is the planning commission fully accepts it, so the ninety days starts.
That is from the clock.
Well, it's just a sketch plan, it's not a land development plan.
Okay, well, so they don't have to, or preceding a land development plan, but yes, it's a sketch plan.
So that doesn't start the ninety day clock.
Not, really, sketch plans are informal, they're not required. They're just looking for input.
But that, to be clear also, that is the process for anything that is submitted to the planning, other other than ordinance reviews, any land development plan or sketch plan has to be accepted for review, because if it doesn't meet the objective criteria to be reviewed, such as they don't give an actual drawing, they just give us a, a, you know, the application and nothing else, then that's incomplete, therefore nothing will happen to it.
The planning commission can choose not to accept it.
Oh, can they?
Yes.
Well, it's just a sketch plan, there's supposed to be informal input, I would imagine.
And I can tell you that within the past year, there have been two sketch plans emissions where they specifically said they did not want a formal engineering review, so.
That's funny, to get that three hundred dollars worth.
Right, so that's.
You said they didn't want a.
The applicant, I'm not saying this is, I'm just giving you a general overall, I'm not saying that uh Healthy Minds said that. I'm saying that some people, even though you may see a sketch plan on the agenda, they may have also said, we don't want a formal engineering review.
They don't want to pay for it.
Cause they don't want to pay for it.
Yeah, they want to wait, because they'll need a formal engineering review at some point, right?
Kind of land development for us.
Right.
So for now, correct, so this is just an informal steer us before we come up with a.
Right, oftentimes they will, we just, they will say.
I've seen them done here before.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, they they often will just say, what is your general feeling about this, absent even, he won't even say anything on that, you know?
Okay.
All right, so I had the motion on the table, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.